Other than that, not many people there.
Oh, that's.
At the moment, hopefully we'll get some weather this weekend and that will get some folks moving towards it. Hello, Dan.
Hey, guys.
Hey, thanks for coming on, Dan.
Oh, no problem. It feels like old times.
You must need billable hours.
Not that bad.
Not enough to sacrifice an evening, huh?
Hey, I'm, I, I'm just, just, just happy to help out. Have you, so did you say you've been, you've been working at the resort?
Yeah, yeah, we've been working and then I skied this week as well. In fact, I work tomorrow, starting at seven AM. So, but, so we'll see. It's, you know, they've, it's all pretty much all manmade at this point. I mean, there was some stuff that's underneath the, the stuff they've blown, but it's pretty, it's been warm, so it's pretty crunchy. And there's a thin, you know, they do a good job grooming and they got, you know, they got some loose stuff on top, but you're basically skiing on hard pack.
Yeah. We went up kind of out to back country last Thursday or Friday, can't remember, and it was so crappy.
So the, the snow this weekend will give us a shot.
Help, help turn things around, yeah.
Yeah, give us a little more.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna be in the background till you need me, Paulie.
Okay.
Want me to text you or?
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll have my thing on, then my, my monitor on, I'll be watching, I'm just, I'll just be on mute.
Hey, Carol.
Hi, Phil.
How are you?
Good. Hi, Dan, haven't seen you in a while.
Oh, hi, Carol, yeah, I just put myself on, I just put myself on mute.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I've got, I've got these, these last few projects that I told Polly I'd help her out with, and so tonight, tonight, we got one of them on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Well, good to see you.
Yeah, likewise. Likewise. Is it, is it colder up there than it is down here? At least you guys don't have the inversion.
No, so I think it's probably warmer, but it got cold today, so.
That's, you know, it's clouded up, and so we'll see how it goes. So there's some chance of snow tonight, there's probably more. There's a lot more on Saturday.
Right.
I'm here, Phil.
I see Jerry, I see Ralph, we're waiting on Chris. And there she is trying to come in. So with Chris, I think we have, who we're gonna have, Bob called me this afternoon, he got, he is flying an airplane tonight and will not be in the meeting. But we still have a court and can continue. Okay, so welcome everyone. Is it a couple of o'clock, it's 6:01, so I guess we can start. I got to do one thing here, because it's not working. There we go. Not sure how people are getting in with the video. I thought we were supposed to have everybody frozen until we unfreeze them, so I'm just checking.
Sorry, that's my fault then. I thought that we were letting everybody in.
But no video and no audio.
Right.
Yeah. But I mean, but somehow somebody's video came up, so I
Oh.
I shut it down. I don't know why it did that. It's supposed to behave, but.
Yeah, I was able to turn my video on before it would let me turn my audio on.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll check that. Anyway, welcome to the Haida Utah Town Council regular meeting, December 10th, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And the first thing that I will do is read the anchor site determination, which has been updated as of earlier this week. So, December 7th, 2020, determination regarding conducting town of Haida public meetings without an anchor location. The mayor of the town of Haida hereby determines that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location pursuant to Utah Code 52-4-207-4 and Haida Town Ordinance 2020-03. The facts upon which this determination is based include the percent and number of positive COVID-19 cases in Utah has been over 27.1% of those tested since November 2nd, 2020. So 25, you know, a quarter of our population is tested positive. The seven day average has been over 3,000 since November 30th, and COVID-19 has risen to 582 cases as of the date of this letter. As a result, this meeting will not have a physical anchor location. All participants will connect remotely. Public meetings are available via the YouTube livestream or, or the high, and on the high, high dot YouTube channel at the link shown here. You can also join the meeting through Zoom. If you're not planning to comment and just want to listen, YouTube may be an easier option for you. Otherwise, you can join the Zoom session and we will, at the appropriate times, we will let those who want to comment in to comment. This determination expires on January 6th, 2021. Let me take attendance. We've got Carol.
Here.
Ralph.
Here.
Jerry.
Here.
And Chris.
Here.
And as I mentioned, Bob Nettleberg is, is excused due to the fact that he got called into work. So the first three items we have to deal with this evening are approval of minutes from August 14, 27, and September 4. Again, apologies for the lateness of the minutes, no, no reflection on Alicia at all. We had a lot of meetings in that August, early September timeframe. And some of those meetings were hours and hours in length. And the translation of those, those sessions into minutes is a lot of work, so appreciate what Alicia's been doing. And I just apologize to council that you're seeing them fairly late. It's just, she's trying her best, so.
I will say that, given that, you know, we, we got them at some point this morning, I have not reviewed any of the three.
Okay. Chris, have you had a chance to look at them?
Uh, yeah, I did a quick speed read, yes.
Okay, Carol?
Yes, and I have a couple of corrections.
Okay, and Jerry? Sorry, Jerry, and Ralph?
You're on mute, Ralph.
I'm sorry, Phil. Yeah, I didn't have a say so in those meetings anyway.
True.
You don't have a quorum.
So I don't really have a quorum to approve, so I guess we'll delay them until the next session. And that'll give you plenty of time to read them.
Yep.
Carol, if you want to just reach out to Alicia and share your corrections?
Yes, it just, it has to do with the time listed. She listed on page eight and nine that we adjourned at 1:15.
Yeah, that's probably wrong.
PM.
Yeah, that's probably right.
So that needed to be changed.
That was actually that noon meeting that we had on a Friday, repealing the annexation. So that was the correct time.
Okay.
Yep, see right there.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, if the meeting started at 12:00 PM, how could we adjourn at 11 something?
12:00 PM is noon.
I know, but she said, I know what it is, but she said we adjourned at 11.
No, I'm sorry, I corrected it to 11, so it stands correct then at 1.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll, we'll come back to these then. At, so Alicia, would you make a note to put these on the calendar for, for the January session? As well as any new ones that you've managed to get done between now and then?
I'll do, thank you.
Okay, the next section is public input. This is for talking about things that are not listed on the agenda tonight. I'm assuming that some of the people on this, on this, that are attending, do want to speak. So there's a process to do that. If you are on the Zoom, you would use the electronic capability to raise your hand. There is functionality at the bottom of the, of the screen to allow you to do that on the participants list. So if you want to comment on something specific, okay, so Maureen, you gave me a thumbs up. I assume that means you'd like to chat. Let me find your name on the list. And give you the approval to speak. So you should be able to chat now, Maureen.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Yeah, hi, I'm Maureen Pelton. I'm here with my husband Charlie Hartwell, and you and I, Phil, have had an email exchange. I am speaking as a homeowner of Shoreline Phase 1 Development and expressing my frustration with GCD and some health and safety issues that are not being addressed, which is the slope erosion, the sewer backup, the venting of the water heaters that are, it's dangerous, and fencing at the drop offs, which we were told by GCD would, before closing, that they would be putting up fences. And as you know, all know, I believe, we are quite frustrated, all of us as homeowners. I have organized the community, we, we've developed a committee, and we are asking the town for support and help in dealing with these safety and health issues with GCD. These, this is not about issues within our homes or warranty issues. These are not warranty issues. And so I'm speaking for myself, but also there's many, many others who have these concerns, and we would like to know what the town can do to support us, since we live in the town and we're homeowners. And, and I think the slopes eroding can be a real issue for the town. And so I wanted on the record that there is great concern and we would like support.
Okay. A couple of comments on that, and we, Polly, I'll let you talk about the communication you've had with GCD lawyer.
Okay.
But before you do that, you know, we have, we have reached out to, to the GCD construction folks, told them about your concerns, we told them about the last meeting. They have, we asked them to provide us input in writing on how they're addressing them. We've got a, I believe we have a letter, we have a letter from them, I don't know if it addresses everything we asked them to do, because it just came in today, we haven't had a chance to review it, but will in detail. And we've asked them, you know, to, to respond to the, to the citizen concerns. Additionally, I am attempting to have some, have the town engineer get inside a few of the units. I, we have been working with Brian Cooper to try and arrange that with some of the homeowners there. We can't come 17 times for 17 different homes. We have got to try and coordinate some visits. And it's my understanding that Brian was working on that, although he doesn't appear to be in the meeting tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Polly to talk a little bit about the, the letter we received.
Yeah, I, I too was not, we, I received it this afternoon and was not able to really look through it closely. They do respond to many of the claims, but it's a seven page letter, and other than just glancing at it, I'm not able to respond exactly to everything, but we can follow up with you about it and about, you know, share the letter with you.
That would be great.
And just generally, I mean, we're doing what we can, but recognize that the town doesn't really have jurisdiction to do much. I mean, we're working, as the mayor said, with the town engineer to see if there's anything outstanding that we can try to enforce, but beyond that, a lot of the issues do come down to kind of homeowner issues, and so it's unfortunately, we just don't have the jurisdiction to do it. That being said, we're doing what we can, and why don't I get with you, if you email your information to me or to Phil and to the mayor and forward it, he can forward it to me and I can be in touch with you tomorrow.
Thank you, Polly. I, I actually did call you a couple of weeks ago after meeting with Ryan Taylor and your message, but you didn't get back to me, but I will reach out to you again. And I'm just really quite confused how the eroding slopes, there are several of them, are not, that that's a homeowner issue. That, that's baffling to me.
Yeah, they, they may be, they may be a ground stability issue, and that's what the engineer has to tell us, and with that, you know, with that, if he, if he says that that is a concern, then of course we can, we can sit down with GCD and talk about that, because it becomes, because it is in fact, you know, a stability issue, but until he tells us that, I can't, all we can do is raise it to them as a concern at this point.
Right, Phil, what, what engineer are you talking about?
Our engineer.
Yeah, so Ryan Taylor has been to my home. I could get you the date, that's where I got Polly's name and number. And he is very concerned, and he is the one who recommended I organize the 50 homeowners to come together and bring, bring this up and come to the city council and come to the planning commission. So I don't know, maybe, I don't know, maybe your wires got crossed, but, but Ryan is quite concerned and trying to find a resolution.
Well, we have it on the list for review. I don't know that he, he hasn't, he hasn't given a report to me that he deems that as a a significant structural issue, for example, but he's working on that and I'm expecting that shortly. So I do know, as I said, I know he's working with Brian and trying to arrange additional visits, so we'll, I'll keep up with him on that and see where we are. He's not able to join tonight, he is, he had another meeting which he had to attend.
Okay.
Okay. So we're working on it, we'll share the letter when Polly gets through that. I do know that you know, GCD is committed to trying to make things right, you know, the future of their, their business here is, is connected to homeowner satisfaction. So I, you know, they, I know you guys are not satisfied with the speed or the type of response, and that's what we're trying to increase the sense of urgency with them, but at the, you know, at the end of the day, they're, you know, they're the ones putting themselves at risk by not responding to you guys, so.
So I'm confused about that. How is that? How, I don't quite understand, well, I disagree with you, but I also don't understand how it will impact them if we're not satisfied, because you made it really clear in your email to me that you would not do anything or withhold permits, or no.
Well, we can't, we can't do anything legally, but it will impact them as far as sales, if, if the general sense of the community is that these are not places that anybody wants to live.
Yeah, and I still don't quite understand that, but.
I mean, the real estate community will, will get the word very quickly. So I believe it would have an impact, but.
Phil, Phil, this is Chris, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
And ask a question? So we heard an hour's worth of, you know, public input in our last meeting about these same problems, so we are, we've heard, we've heard this, Maureen.
So since then, Chris.
Can I finish my thought?
Yeah, okay.
I was just taking a breath and trying to compose myself, so health and safety is, you know, core to what government is all about, right? And I imagine, I don't, I haven't seen any of the records, but I imagine we have inspection records.
We do.
And we know who the engineer was, and we know the dates of the inspection, and we know when the certificates of occupancy were were issued. I am very interested to see those. I imagine they're filed someplace. I'm very interested to see those, for example, fencing of drop offs. I, I know that when I have lived other places, built my own home, there are certain requirements before a CO is issued, and for example, I, you know, I ride my bike through there. I don't live in Shoreline, but I ride my bike through there a lot. And it's, you know, I look up the hill and they, and I look at the slope, which is very steep, because it was, you know, they, they tried to get as many units in as possible, but then they were approved for that prior to this administration, but my question is, how could they have been allowed to, some of these units been allowed to be occupied without, for example, that safety fencing in the backyards, to the drop off that goes down to the sidewalk and to the street, it's a really substantial drop off. I would really like the town request respectfully that the town review those records and and have our engineer, Ryan, take a look at those and, and actually issue the council a report before our, you know, January meeting, is what I would ask.
Well, Chris, I think that's fine. I just would like to say that since the last meeting, we got legal involved to understand what we can do legally. We've written a letter to their legal representation and to GCD telling them of the concerns. We've had our engineer begin to review the, the key concern points that were listed. We have asked one of the residents up there to help us coordinate in, in, in-house inspection with a licensed building inspector of our choice. But that, those dates have not yet been set. And it's, you know, it's, it's our intention to provide council report based on those visits that will be made and share that output. If we find that, we, we also know, you know, the, the inspection company, it was not TO, it was the prior outsourced engineering firm. But if they are, if we find that they were delinquent, then we would, of course, approach them as well for for their delinquency, but.
No, thanks, thanks for going through all that, Mayor. I, I'm not aware of all the work that you've done in the background. I'm glad you outlined that. I also just had an aha moment, oh yeah, we're in the middle of holidays and such. Lots, you know, we've had a holiday since our last meeting and we have a bunch of holidays coming up, so I'm gonna actually, it may be a little unreasonable for me to be so demanding for answers, but I, I do feel a certain sense of urgency, though, that we do what we can and what we're legally able to and what we're, we think we should do, because it, it, it really does concern me. I really don't want to see anybody get hurt.
I think, thank, thank you, Chris. I really appreciate you, and I do like the idea of, of understanding more of the, what the inspection that happened before Ryan came on board. And I also wanted to let you know that Brian Cooper actually is on the call right now. He, he's in, using Zoom through his wife Rachel's.
Oh, okay.
And he would like to speak. They texted me. So he has some input for this too, Brian Cooper.
If I can make a quick comment before we do that, because I, I want to echo Chris's concerns here. I, I'm troubled at the amount of, you know, the, the mountain of complaints that we've had against this single builder, you know, I live in a GCD home over here in Rustler, and I'm concerned with what, what has happened, what's going on in Shoreline. I want the town to be able to do everything that's legally possible to, to help resolve these issues. And, you know, I support the idea of letting the professionals weigh in and then getting back to the council. And, you know, let's, let's move from there, you know, I, I want to help resolve this in any way we can legally do so. And, you know, let's hear from the professionals, both the current and former engineering firm, if necessary, and, you know, what's changed since the COO was issued, you know, has, has anything changed? I can't imagine that the conditions are vastly different from when those were approved, so it makes me question those, that original report.
There's, you know, in response to that, Jerry, there's no, I mean, we, it's the same building code, you know, that we've adopted, hasn't changed.
Well, and that's kind of my point is, you know, we need to understand.
Maybe a different version, you know, depending on, you know, the timings, but it's basically that it's the national building code, so.
Right.
Well, part of the problem, and I'll weigh in one comment on the slopes, because I did analysis with two outside engineering firms that aren't associated with either our prior engineer or current engineer. And both of those firms specialize in this area of engineering, geotechnical. Both were, and I drove through, through town with them, spent time with their engineer, really said, you know, the original design and the original approvals were not within the typical national standards. So if that's the case, I don't know if there's anything we can do, because as Chris, you were saying, it was pre-approved before anyone here is, and the sad part about it is, you know, we look at our roads and we look at our slopes and we're saying, gee, what happened here? You know, and who approved this? And my, and, and again, when I was on the planning board and looked back, you know, seven, eight years in, in terms of some of those minutes, you realize that there were some things that probably shouldn't have happened and did. And the sad part about it is now we're living with it, so I agree with Jerry and you, Chris, that, you know, we need to find some, some fixes, really take a look at this and put, put the fire to GCD in any way we can. I know, you know, so I'll leave it at that, and I'll be glad to, again, share any information on Nylex and Tensar and some of the firms I dealt with to Brian, you, or Carol, I think you were reaching out as well, so.
And, and just by way of history and to follow on Ralph with your comments, you, you did that study when, when Rustler was dealing with Burlap Mountain, right, so we brought them in and, and they looked at Burlap Mountain as well as all the other slope issues that were going on in the town, so that's, I'm thinking that's like two, two and a half years ago, Ralph, is that about right?
Early on, when we came aboard, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'd like to make a comment, since I live in Shoreline, and I have listened to many of my neighbors in Shoreline and their comments about the health and safety issues. I also have my own health and safety issues with GCD. I don't want to be, don't want to have a conflict of interest here, but it sounds like Jerry and Ralph, you live in, you live in GCD properties, and so I'd just like to add my comments that I support what Chris said, what Jerry said, what Ralph said. We need to get to the bottom of what's going on.
So, hi, everyone, this is Brian. You see me there as Rachel, so.
Yeah.
I haven't had a sex change, I'm just there in my wife's machine. And Ralph, I appreciate. And Ralph, I appreciate if you could send me that info. I appreciate it. The reason I asked to talk is because. We had the infrastructure meeting yesterday and spent a long time talking about this. Carol was on that meeting too. With Ryan Taylor and two other folks from TO Engineering. That we, we talked about the slopes. And what Ryan suggested and, and we agreed is that. They were going to get a quote from a geotech firm. And so Ralph, if you have a couple you've worked with in the past, we can, I can pass those on to Ryan. He said they've got one they work with too, but. Ryan's suggestion, which I agree with, was to look across the whole town, not just at Shoreline. And that includes Burlap Mountain, which, you know, I've, I've seen and doesn't look like it's remediated properly to me. And the other area we had addressed was on Longview Drive, just before it meets. Shoreline, for the gray wall there on the right as you come down into our area, it's vertical, right? And literally. We were out walking the other day. Mary Freeman was walking her dog, and she reached over and grabbed a piece of rock and just pulled it out of the wall with her hand. So I don't think that, that wall is, is stable. Obviously, and then obviously there's Shoreline Drive, and then there's North Shoreline Court, and that's got the red crumbly rock. The code for that. For unstable rock is to slope it back two feet horizontally for every foot vertical. And I think we're barely one to one. And for stable rock, it's supposed to be one to one. So if you don't do that, you're supposed to put in retaining walls or, you know, shot creator, do something to stabilize, either stabilize it or, or provide a catch basin basically for the rock. Which they haven't done. So. What Ryan was going to ask the geotech firm to do was do an inspection of those areas. And, well, he was asking to give us a quote for doing inspection on those and then coming up with. Several alternatives for remediation and what, and what the estimated cost would be to do that, so we could give that to GCD. But I think that requires, as a minimum, to get, to engage them, requires a minimum of the mayor's approval, and if it goes over a certain amount, then it has to be the council, but. The plan was to bring that. Estimate for, for doing the inspection. At the January meeting of the infrastructure committee, but they can get it much sooner if you'd like, and we can, we can have, have Ryan. You know, send it to the mayor, who can distribute to the council, and we can do an off-cycle approval if it needs it. But I think that might be something that would be positive evidence. Of a, of an issue that it's not in compliance with the APWA code for sure. The second item. Yeah, so Ryan volunteered me to, to work with. Independent Inspector Dave Thatcher, and he sent me his, introduced us via email yesterday. Dave has not reached out to me, so I'm going to reach out to him tomorrow when I have the time. I had a pretty busy day today. And that's, that's the inspector that is going to go around and look at the Shoreline homes that have had issues. We think. It's possible that the sewer issues, backup issues, which we've now had at all three levels, which is interesting. Based on that evidence and the fact we haven't seen it come up through any of the manholes. We actually think it's the feeder line and probably the. The backup preventer valve, ironically, not working properly and causing a backup. And Ryan said that he'd seen one instance of that, so it could be that some of these valves are defective. The good news is they can be replaced without digging up the line. They're, they're designed that allows institute replacement through the cleanout, but. The feeder lines are not the town's responsibility, however, so that's more of a homeowner issue. However. The philosophy or the, or the, or the strategy here is. By having this independent inspector kind of redo final inspections of these homes. And then coming up with a list of issues. That the town can then present those to GCD and say, look. One. It's clear you didn't comply with some of the codes, and so we're going to be more stringent on inspections on Shoreline Phase Two and Three and so on. And he was also suggesting that we. Use that as some ammunition to say, look, we're not going to approve Phase Three until you finish. Phase One and Phase Two, which would kind of make sense to me. But do them in chronological order anyway.
Brian, I, I don't know if that's, that, that's, you know, that's an engineer's perspective, not a legal perspective, and so, you know, but.
I'm just relaying what Ryan was suggesting. On the other hand, is there any reason we have to approve building permits? As submitted?
Yeah. We have no legal way. We can't just say, you guys are doing a bad job on, you know, your. On these other things, and therefore we can't give you a building permit. Unfortunately, it just doesn't work that way.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
If they're, I mean, if they're licensed. In the state of Utah, they have a right to build.
Okay.
So. So Brian. And for those of you in Shoreline, we just. Flushed and scoped the entire Phase One sewer system. We're getting that report. I just had a meeting with JSST yesterday. They're expecting, we're expected to have those. They turned their, I guess, the report over to our. To the TO engineers, but they have, you know, they're just beginning to evaluate it and what they, what they see in the, in the, in the lines. In general, at, at the first glance, everything in the mains seemed good up there. But I haven't had the final report yet, so I think that will, will help give you ammunition on. Recognizing that the issue may be in the feeder lines from the units themselves.
Correct, yeah. They, they reported that yesterday and said that they're still going through hours of video, right?
Yeah.
But so far they haven't found any, any issues. And, I mean, this is the first time I heard Brian say that he did know of an instance where the backup preventer valve. That failed and caused a backup in one of the Shoreline units earlier. And so he's thinking, well, maybe they got a few bad batch, a batch of a few bad ones, right, from the supplier.
Well, I mean, the, the, the valves are pretty well designed. I, I mean, I actually looked at them earlier when we had the complaints. I don't want to get into a whole engineering thing here, but, you know, the, the, the issue with. A mechanical. Prevention device in a, in a waistline is that it can. Unfortunately, manage to get jammed closed because of debris in the, in the system. A lot of people, the code. You know, strongly suggests them, but. At the same time, they, they have a history of creating issues. So I, I, it's sort of a darned if you are, do and darned if you don't kind of thing, but.
Well, the, the reason we suspect them is because now that we've had them. Back up just last week in the highest, most level of Shoreline Phase One. And no evidence. In any of the manholes, right? Ryan was saying, well, you know, if it had backed all the way up from the lower Peter line or main line. All the way up there, it would be coming out of manual somewhere, right? And that has not happened, so. It's some issue with the feeder line, and he suspects the valve, but like you said. GCD just tells me that, you know, we need to flush more water down. And I said, well, I've never been in a sewer system where. These, you know, 1.7 gallon toilets aren't enough, right, but. That's their claim. Of course, they put the toilets in, so.
So, so, yeah, thanks, Brian, and so.
I just want to get, I just want to update you on the status. We're, we're still trying to. Chase that one down. One third thing, I guess, is the water heaters. They are starting to address the water heater vent, and. For those units that have a radon vent, they're repurposing the radon vent. As the exhaust vent for the water heater. And then replumbing the. The smaller two-inch vents together as the inlet, and that actually complies with the. Manufacturers. Instructions for the size of the vents, however. There's an issue with them being so far apart that you can get a pressure differential from wind. They potentially could cause a backflow. I think it's pretty minor. I accepted it. I was, I think I was the first game pig, and I said. Since I paid 350 bucks to have a radon vent, but in, in the spring, when you can actually do decent roofwork. I'd like to have a radon vent put in, and they said, sure, they would do that. And I said, I may decide at that time to. Actually reuse the quote new radon vent as the inlet, and that would be totally compliant with the manufacturer's. Code. Now, they claim that the manufacturer changed its installation instructions. Since the time that they. Put them in, they allowed more two-inch pipe at a time, however. They did not allow. The vent and exhaust to be so close together and at the same elevation, so. They were still in violation of the code when they did that. They are, they are trying to address that, however, so they seem to be cooperating on them.
Thanks, Brian. So. As, as you're beginning to hear. We have not been sitting still for members of the council who may be concerned that we're not doing work. So. We are. It takes time, but some progress is being made. Frank, you've had your hand up for a while. I'm going to let you speak. I just wanted to get Brian in there because he's more in the loop.
Sure. Hi, I think Brian pretty much summed it up, you know, during our. Meetings with the homeowners. Brian had mentioned the steepness of the grade and. Some of these issues with the sewerage, improper pitches could potentially be the issue. Now we have some additional information, but. You know, we just want to make sure that the town supports, you know, our group of homeowners to follow up with GCD. And force them to correct the violations. As Maureen mentioned. You know, we've heard that this is homeowner issues. And you mentioned that, you know, if word gets out, it will affect GCD sales. However, it also affects the value of all our homes. We're already here. So we want to make sure that the town holds GCTD to the fire and we get these problems resolved.
Okay, we're, we really are working on it. Using all the mechanisms that we have available to us. All right, I'm looking for other hands on public input. Let's see them at the moment. Okay. If there are no more hands, then I will. Close the session, the public input session on the non-agenda items. Okay. And we'll move on to the public hearing portion, which again, we will allow input. So we're going to talk about a budget amendment. In. Before we jump to the document itself, I just want to remind everybody, because we went through this. With a great deal of stress last year until we figured out what, what's really going on. And what's really going on is that. The numbers we're going to look at does not mean we're out of money, but the numbers. We look at, the, the, the law requires us, and Wes is on the line, and he's going to take us through it, but. The law requires us to have. A reasonable gap. Or alignment, maybe it was a better word, a reasonable alignment with. With what our budget target is for a specific expense and what that expense is. So in other words, if we said we thought we were going to get. Twenty-five building permits and therefore we're going to budget. Of X dollars for 25 building permits, and then we get 50. Then there's going to be a large gap between the budgeted amount and the actual. And so what we're looking at here. Is an adjustment. Again, I'll let Wes take us through adjustment in really the budget numbers. For a num, a couple of categories, because we've got more permits, for example, this year. Than we had originally forecast, because we were concerned that, that the COVID situation would slow down the building process. And so we have to, we have to adjust. That bucket so to reflect the both, you know, the revenue side as well as the expense side to be better in alignment. Because again, it's required by state law that we can't be, you know, a huge amount apart. The other thing you're going to hear tonight is, as you know, we passed the, the impact fee. Some months ago, and in fact, 90 days ago, because we've just recently kicked in the full collection of that. And what we have to do is we have to reflect in our budget. A, a place to, to, to put those impact fee dollars when they come in. And, you know, and as well as the outflow back to the master developer when we pay them on a quarterly basis. So that's sort of the, the high level review of what's here. And I'll let Wes and or Jan jump in and take us through this. So I don't know, Jan, do you want to go first? You want Wes to go first?
Okay, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I can, Wes.
Okay, I, I couldn't unmute myself a little bit earlier, so appreciate the information there and. I want to just remind council that when we were developing the budget. We put in kind of a. As Jan would call it bare bones budget. We, we didn't really know how COVID would impact. The town, and so we were cautious on what we allowed to be in the budget. As the mayor mentioned. It's not unusual to have. Things changed throughout the year. You know, where our, our building permits are higher, the cost to do building inspections is going to be higher, and so. What I've done is I've tried to prepare. A budget that'll also. Potentially address issues over the next six months that, that could come up and. Hopefully we'll maybe only have to do one more amendment at year end. So what we're requesting is an additional 75,000 in being requested to cover engineering expenses. In the current budget year. We've had quite a bit of development activity. And. You know, quite a bit of Ryan's services required. And so we're requesting that we increase that budget line item. As I mentioned, our building inspections, we've exceeded the revenue at this point in the year already. Beyond what we had budgeted, so that's the good news. The other part of it is we do need to amend the budget inspection. And increase those costs associated with the budget inspection. The amount of principal that we budgeted. We budgeted $1,000 short in that account. We have 1,000 more that we paid in principal on that. Item. And so it's a request to essentially approve. The payment of that $1,000. With the CARES Act money, there's different requirements that. We have to maintain in order to expend those dollars and, and to ensure that. We meet federal regulation. We received 58,778 in funding for a second and third tranche of funds. And I'm requesting some budgets amounts for the COVID fund. I know I'm budgeting beyond the amount that we're collecting. In CARES funding, but I want to be able to expend every dollar. In CARES grant funds that we can, so we do not have to return those to the state and Fed. And the detail of these changes are all included in the resolution. Lastly, as the mayor mentioned, we have some different impact funds. What I've done initially is set up a budget. Based on. Just a, a guesstimate, an estimate of, of how much revenue potential we will have. And also allow for some expenditures in those funds. I haven't identified necessarily a specific source. But I thought it important. But I thought it important to segregate those funds. Um, impact fee funds for their specified purpose. So that any point in time, we can uh, pull a balance sheet and see exactly what we have in impact fees. Available for uh, use. And so uh, with fund accounting, um, it's not unusual to put these different. Types of impact fees in their fund and to maybe only have one or two expenditure items. But it's just simply to segregate those funds and to ensure that they get spent on things that uh, qualify. Uh, as impact fee eligible. So uh, in the Class C road funds, we had a budget of seventy two thousand five hundred in the general fund. I have simply uh, proposed that we set the uh, Class C road fund up and that we. Uh, account for those revenues in the Class C road fund separately. Um, treat it as if it's a restricted uh, cash.
So Wes, are those co-mingled today?
So it's not unusual for towns to, to put Class C road funds in the general fund. Um, that's how we currently have it recorded in the budget and so nothing unusual. Um, but at some point in time, you do want to try to segregate those and restrict them. For, for purpose and you'll go and you'll identify projects. That, that meet the restrictive requirements of the different types of funds that you have. Um, same with culinary water impact, wastewater impact, stormwater impact. I've, I've set up funds. I've uh, set up the system to allow um. The building department as they collect those impact fee funds. To be able to receive those and, and record them to the funds, so we know what's available for use. And that's essentially kind of uh, what I wanted to cover tonight in the budget amendment. And I'll, I'll turn it back to the mayor unless the council or the mayor has any questions.
Yeah, I have, I have a question on the building. Uh, inspection fees as well as the engineering fees. Aren't those uh, passed through? I mean, uh, explain to me why the.
Yeah, Jerry.
The change happens here.
They are, they are passed through Jerry. That's, but the thing is that they're different. In from what we budgeted to what we're getting, so we have to mount, manage both sides of the balance sheet.
Okay.
Right, so we budgeted X and we got double the number of permits, so we got double the amount of money. And we also have double the amount of spend. So, so this is an exercise, this is, this is not spending more money for the town. Uh, in, in the standpoint of depleting our reserves, this is uh, a, a, a. Mass balance type process where we're reflecting a budget that's, that's closer to the amount of building permits that we have. And therefore we'll, we will then reflect um. In, you know, the income from those as well as the spend associated with those.
Uh, yeah, my question was more in regards to the language here. It talks about the expenditure side, but it doesn't talk about the revenue side, so. I don't know if, you, you know, you could read this and not, if you didn't understand it was passed through, you, you might think, oh, we're spending more money.
So, so understand too that um. There are certain types of expense accounts for city uh, services. So typically the city will collect a uh, building inspection fee. That um. You know, that's typically much higher than um, what the cost of building inspection is. That's not unusual. Um, and oftentimes those are used for, you know. Uh, different parts of the uh, general fund activities such as. Uh, engineering and development activities, you know, city costs for engineering services. So, you know, there are parts of city services where um. The engineer might provide city services that, that are expensed to the city. But I don't see anything unusual in, in uh, those amounts. We do need to, you know, address a few billing issues, I think, on, on some of the pass-through stuff, but I've been working with Jan and. And we'll work with Sharon to, to address those issues. So when it comes to this specifically, you know, we've collected much more in building inspection revenue. Than we've expended. By and large.
And, and so that's.
Jerry, you know, if you look at the last sentence of both of those paragraphs, it, they were, they were attempting to explain that these expenditures are recruited through the fees.
So I, I guess my question is that, that we have a, an actual number. I, I assume the budget. Forecasted both the revenue side and the expense side. And we're talking about a specific number on the expense side, making an amendment for that. But are we not amending the revenue side?
We are.
Okay.
And that's reflected down here in, in this uh.
This is an actual resolution.
So, so we're, it is, again, it is. It is net. Uh, neutral to our, to the, to the um. Actually relatively neutral to the um. To the total impacted, so, so it's money in versus money out. We're actually, you know, we're not gonna be completely neutral because we've got COVID funds, which we didn't forecast. So, you know, we're actually reflecting, you know, additional revenue that we hadn't in the original forecast, but that aside. The engineering stuff pretty much balances out.
So, so understand too Jerry, so just to give you an idea and I'm. I'm pulling the financial statements just through seventh of December. And the city has collected three hundred and seventeen thousand in building permit revenue. And in uh, building inspection. We've had uh, fifty thousand one seventy four that's recorded. Now I'm sure there's some additional billings that need to be recorded. But um, the city is definitely covering the cost to address the building inspection and. And those different types of uh, services. So um, you know, it's my intent to give you an update on the next few months as soon as we can. Address some of those pass-through bills and, and just help. Um, staff understand how to process those. But um, again, it's, I don't see anything unusual on that. When it comes to the COVID. Uh, expenditures, so what you see there is I'm essentially recognizing fifty eight thousand. In uh, grant revenue in a federal grant. And I'm also recording a transfer from the general fund. We had about thirty thousand at the beginning of the year from the first tranche. That I recorded a transfer into this fund. For the revenue, uh, so we could expend it in this fund for uh, CARES reimbursement. And so that was simply uh, associated with the timing of when we received those funds in last fiscal year. But I moved them in this fiscal year about thirty thousand. And then I've essentially budgeted thirty thousand higher in expenditures. Than what we have um. In that fund, but at the end of the day, what will happen is, is most likely our, our safety uh, P D contract. Will have, you know, twenty five to thirty thousand that gets paid out of the general fund instead of the CARES fund. But again, the intent is to over budget so I can fully expand every dollar that'll come in there. On that, you know, on the estimates, you know, it's, it's by no means the intent to, to expand past what. Uh, resources that, you know, the city has for specific functions when it comes to those impact fee funds. And the Class C road funds.
And the police and fire in the section below, how does that uh, relate to COVID?
So those are um. Expenditure accounts that I've set a budget for and. You know, we're gonna have basically about ninety thousand. That will actually expand through that account. We'll expend all the uh, resources. Some of it might, you know, five thousand of it might come out of repair and maintenance. And twenty two thousand might come out of information technology.
Let, let me jump in here for a second Wes and try and.
Okay.
Jerry's, Jerry's question, because he wasn't really looking at the math as much as the, the, the topics. So Jerry, um, you know, emergency services are, are getting a lot more callouts due to COVID. Um, there are, you know, there's more ambulance service, there's more um, response to. Um, to, you know, health issues, so those, those services are, are exceeding their budgets. Fairly significantly because of the COVID situation and they're passing those costs on. Um, to communities in which they service, so.
So the bill you get for the ambulance that came to your house.
Yeah.
The, the, the resident or the, the person that took the ride is only paying for part, part of it?
Right, because they, you know, they, they're, they have to do staff and overtime and stuff like that and they, they're restricted by their. Um, their um, budget commitment to their community that, you know, we, if the ambulance comes, it's five grand. Um, but they may have done that with, and they've got people out with sickness and all that rest of that, so they may, maybe costing them significantly more. So um, so you know, part of the CARES Act allows us to use those funds to, to help keep those services going. Throughout the, the COVID crisis.
And you know, there's nothing unusual in the way we're approaching the budget there either. You know, most communities, uh, the treasury department came out in September and said, you know, for. For police services, we're not gonna scrutinize your expenditures in that, in that category. And so essentially that said, you know, what they were saying is from the federal government's point of view is. Is go ahead and expend those dollars and we're not gonna uh, claw those back at a future date. Um, if you use them specifically for public safety type services, so I think it's a good opportunity. For the council to be able to provide those services. You know, and initiate that process. Um, if you enter into those contracts, you gotta consider the future impact that you'll have. Um, and how to, how to fund that, but I think that discussion's probably. Appropriate for uh, the development of the budget this spring when we, when we start up. Any other questions?
So you just.
Yeah.
But they're sorry, sorry guys, let me just finish explaining a couple of things here, so. You know, we spent a lot of uh, our staff uh, time on keeping up with the public health situation and, and. Uh, understanding the rules and regs, we spent, uh, we've had to spend money on, on. Uh, computer hardware and software so people could work from home and remotely. We've had to update systems like uh, Polaris so that people could log in from, from off-site. So uh, so you know, these, these are the things that, that are allowable under the CARES Act. Um, and uh, you know, that's what you're seeing budgeted in here.
And it's really just, it's a good opportunity for the town to take advantage of it. As a, the opportunity to get a server, to get I T services.
Hey Wes, it's Ralph. Um, yeah, it makes sense to me and looks like the ratios are even kind of generally in proportion to what. You would expect in, in a COVID situation. Will we get more? Because COVID's not going away come January first, so.
Well Ralph, I can't, I can't guarantee you we're gonna get paid, but we're applying uh, each time they give us an opportunity to apply.
Okay, that's really one of what, what I wanted to know and have, have, is there applications going in there now?
Jan, Jan manages that for us. I'm not. Third tranche, I don't know if there's a fourth tranche yet or not.
I'll, I'll make a quick comment. There, there are only three challenges at this point based on the funding they've done. But if Congress approves additional funding for local governments. You could expect that you'd see more, but right, as of right now, this is only funding that we're gonna get.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Somebody else from the council had a question? If not, uh, because this is a public hearing. Then we're going to open up to the public. Again, the process is to uh, use the Zoom uh, functionality to raise your hand. If you have a question regarding this budget process. Okay, again, this is not changing the taxpayer in, from an act taxpayer impact. I mean, we're not raising taxes or anything here by changing these numbers. We're simply moving. You know, revenues and expenditure budget numbers around. To reflect the reality of the first six months of the year versus what we originally targeted.
And Mayor, if someone's on a phone line and wants to raise their hand, what's the key press for that? Or Alicia maybe?
Alicia, I'll need your help on that. I think it's.
I know star six is mute and I think.
I think it's, I think it's star nine, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not seeing any. Then if there's no. Public comment, comment from the general public, then I'm going to close public input for that. And put the resolution up in front of council for amending the budget. Uh, Polly, I do have a, a question in order because we have one council member not present. Uh, but we do have a quorum. Is this allowed to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So there's the resolution, uh, resolution amending the hideout town operating budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty one. And establishing an effective date. I guess, I don't know what that last. Sentence, that portion of sentence means Wes, what is it an establishing effective date? I mean, effective, effective the amendment date, okay, never mind, I got it. Um, so whereas the Fiscal Procedures Act. Provides the governing body an opportunity at any time during the budget period to review budget of funds for the purposes of determining total of them should be increased. And a town treasurer has determined that budget amendment impacting the general fund, COVID nineteen fund, capital projects, impact funds. Um, and uh, is required due to unforeseen circumstances and. Whereas the town properly advertised as prescribed and held a public hearing. On today to garner input from the general public on the, on the amendment. We uh, now therefore be it resolved that the Hideout Town Council. Uh, hideout Utah as follows, town. Hideout Town Operating Budget for Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth is hereby amended to set forth in the attached exhibit which we just reviewed. And hereby incorporated made part of this resolution by reference. So any questions on the resolution from the council? Okay, then what I would need is and uh, uh. A uh, a motion to uh, to adopt a resolution and a second and then we can vote.
So moved.
Thank you Jerry. Thank you Ralph. Okay, we'll go in order of what's down there. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ralph?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution is passed. Bob is uh, you know, not voting because he's not here. Thank you. Okay, that was a important uh. Item and appreciate you guys' support for that.
Thank you mayor.
So um. So the next item on the list is um. So I've seen this discussion of municipal revenues on the agenda, but I think we, that's what we just did. Or am I missing something?
Uh, yeah, we're missing, um, I can, I can summarize quickly. It's, it won't take time. So as we head into budget season, um, this is more review for everyone. But the legislature has authorized three forms of revenue for cities and towns. And that's property tax, sales tax and utility tax. That's energy and telecommunications. That's energy and telecommunications. And these taxes generate money for the general fund of the town. They can use be used for any legitimate. Public purpose. Our current property tax rate is zero 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 eight six seven. Let me just pull up a sample. How do I share screen?
I I I have to stop sharing. And then you should, because you're co-host, down the bottom of your screen, you should 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 see that if you go down the bottom bar on the. On the, you should see share screen. You should be able to click that.
Okay, here, can you see my screen?
We can. Scheduling made easy.
Oh, shoot. That's not what I wanted to show you.
We're now seeing a property tax bill.
Okay, great. So. This is a a typical home in Hideout. Here's the property value of nine hundred and eleven, three seventy eight. Right here, the town gets, you can see the tax rate at point, point, point zero 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 eight six seven. The town gets four hundred and thirty four dollars and fifty nine cents of this total tax bill of six thousand two nineteen sixty one. We compare with other municipalities around us. Can you see my property tax rates? Okay, you can see we're still low. We increased up to be equivalent with Midway. But they increased at the same time. So you can see Hideout is still relatively low. Compared to the other communities surrounding. Heber has a tax rate of one zero one three. We're at oh eight six six. Midway is now one two six one. So we we really still are lower compared to others.
And less than half of Park City.
Correct. Okay, so back to just a discussion on how. How we get revenue and how we use revenue for the general fund. We also have sales tax. Sales tax is something that we need to focus on and we're we're trying to do that with our. Current annexation and other things. We have a sales tax is broken into fifty percent point of sale. And fifty percent is pooled and distributed to all the cities based on population. We don't have any point of sales tax right now. That's consistent with new cities, you know, we need to develop that commercial part of our budget. It's typical that cities operate on roughly four times property tax. Sales tax is roughly four times property tax, so we have some room to grow in that area, as we all know. Another method for revenue is special sales tax. There's a one percent transient room tax. Which is a hotel tax. And that's assessed on rentals that are less than thirty days. Then there's a one point one to one point six additional tax for resort communities. And to get that resort community tax, we'd have to have transient rooms that exceed sixty six percent of the population. There's a point three percent for public transportation district. And there's a point two five percent for light rail. And those are all sales tax and those are special taxes theoretically we could apply if we had. A reason to do so. Then there's municipal energy sales and use tax, which we utilize in the town. It's to tax the sale or use of energy. So Dominion. You know, your utility companies, we tax, it can't exceed six percent of the delivered value. We checked into this last time we budgeted and we were at the maximum rate. There's a municipal telecommunications license tax. And that's three point five percent on telecommunications services and we utilize that as well in the town. So other forms are fees and charges that are generally not to be a source of. Fund revenue. That's the BNC Road Fund. That's collected on gasoline tax and is distributed from the state. Based on our road miles and population and it's proportional. And it's only to be used for maintenance and building of roads within the town. And that's the restricted fund that Wes was talking about. There are other fees like building permit, inspection, garbage collection and water and sewer rates. And those must, there must be a rational basis for the amount charged. And of course, this is one time money, so we need not to. Get reliant on that type of fee revenue. It it is. Utilized, we have a lot of development going on and we're utilizing that in development fees. But there must be a rational basis, so we we couldn't expend those fees collected for permits. Say for public safety. It has to be development related. The same with water and sewer rates and those we put in our enterprise fund. And. Those are basically, we use them for water and sewer, not for other things. We can allocate to the extent it makes sense. If there's labor or something associated. We can allocate to the enterprise, which is what we have been doing. Then there are impact fees and. Those are governed by a section of the state code and a large body of case law, as we. Well know, and those can only be used for public facilities that have a life expectancy of ten or more years. And they're owned and operated by or for the city. And that's basically just a summary, just to remind you as we head into making changes. Or evaluating what we need for our budget going forward. Any questions on those?
Yeah, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but impact fees can be used to create, but not to maintain those.
That's correct. It's it's to be thought of as, let's say you had, you were paying a park's impact fees. Think of that in terms of a citizen buying a piece of the park rather than for a service.
So to close the loop on that, any maintenance would have to be paid out of general fund or some some other fund that. We pay for the maintenance of it.
So if we if we instituted a impact fee to create parks or parks. And go buy land to do that, for example, which is allowed. We would then need to be thinking about, do we have the revenue in the current tax base to maintain that piece of property? You know, as we put in trails, do we have the revenue to make to trail maintenance? Et cetera. If not, then, you know, we would have to. Be thinking that with the addition of an impact fee, we would also have to be thinking about. One of the other forms of revenue to to, you know, be able to do that means that Jen talked about. So through taxes, for example. To be able to do that work. Or through, you know, or, you know, ideally as time progresses, we'll get some, we'll get some commercial. And that will generate some sales tax point of sale revenue for us. So, thank you, Jan. This was a really, I'd forgotten that we had said that you were gonna come back and talk to us about this. To get everybody on the same page of what our opportunities are. That was a very nice summary. Appreciate it very much. Other questions for Jan? That was informational, guys. We're not, there's no action required from what she was sharing. It's just a. Jan, you need to go back up to to your to your Zoom screen and select stop share.
Hey, Jan, while we while we have you on the line here on this subject. Do you have any projections going out when we would, you know, perhaps run into an air at a time when we're. Going to be negative and we'll have to, we have, we will, under the current scenarios, we'd have to raise taxes, so to speak. Any any thoughts about the future from from your knowledge base at this point?
I think we should be scheduling as we go. I think we should moderately increase taxes. Just because we don't want to end up in a crisis. I think.
Jane, at the top, at the top of your screen, there's gonna be a little thing.
Are you back?
No, I'm still seeing your screen. There you go.
All right, there you go.
Now I'm back.
So I don't think, I don't think, Ralph, that we can really project accurately because the building boom is is just. It's it's too unknown, but I think we should be carefully projecting. Increases in taxes to stay up with our surrounding communities and and make sure we're we're not. We're not getting out of of balance with the, you know, the services that we need to provide. Such as police and, you know, some of those public services. I think we need to just really be cognizant of. Keeping our taxes updated and we should do it gradually rather than, you know. Find ourselves in a crisis and go, oh, shoot, you know.
So so, you know, the challenge for the budget team, Ralph, is. In which we need to be kicking off after the first of the year. We're not gonna ask you to do it over the holidays, but. So we're getting, we're getting more homes, so that generates an increase in property tax. But with those homes comes. More roads to plow that needs to be done in a timely manner. You know, as an example, and at some point, you know, our staff, which is two public works guys, is not going to be sufficient. So we're gonna have to budget for a third public works person. And that's gonna, so the question then becomes, it says, does the property tax increment that we get currently. Allow us to budget from the new homes, allow us to budget for a third person? If it does not, then we need.
And new equipment too.
Yeah, and then we need, you know, we need plows and and so forth. You know, we just bought, for example, we just bought a a loader. We're gonna need to buy another truck. So, you know, it's kind of a vicious circle. That we're gonna have to work through and and try and understand what percentage of. You know, what percentage of the general fund revenue comes from. Comes from the increased homes and does that. Enable us to, you know, and what percentage of spend comes with an increased home? And we have to figure out what that ratio is. So is it, you know, is it two to one that the tax more than. Covers it or is it the other way around? And my in my expectation is, is that based on our current tax rate. The cost of of labor and equipment is gonna be greater than what we generate from, but we gotta do the math. But my guess is, as Jan articulated, is we're likely come back. And we also froze froze the tax rate this year purposely because of COVID. But I think we're gonna be forced to be looking at a a tax action of some sort. In in order to support the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. And you've given that the it's not clear where we are going to be on the annexation and even if it does sustain. We won't have any revenue for that for several more years. So, you know, we're gonna be at a disconnect there for a while.
And I looked at, I looked at Nate's or his fiscal engineers, you know. Pro forma budget and it doesn't look like that would even kick in for quite a while. But the net was what is positive. So if we looked at long enough, we certainly get some revenue from that basis. But Jan, you were saying what? And I don't want to belabor this too much longer. Did you say the average is sales tax contributes four X? On on property tax? Was, did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. That's a typical municipality, not a new municipality. Say Heber, for instance, they would collect four times the amount of property tax in sales tax.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Jan, for reference, we might want to look at an established mid to smaller size community. Like a Midway or, you know, because I, you know, there's no way that Hideout is gonna have the type of. Retail commercial that a Heber does.
Yeah, well, Midway actually has been really focusing on it and they have integrated. Campground into their town to get that sixty six percent extra, one point one percent. And they have a couple of hotels. So. Been really dialing down on the formulas to maximize their sales tax revenue. So, you know, it's it's something that we have a a need to start really getting aggressive about. And thinking about how we, how we begin that process.
Well, that's a perfect lead in for this next item.
Right.
I just asked real quick, Jan, have, did you do any assessment of, I don't know how many short term rentals there are. Within the town of Hideout. Is there any ability? Obviously, there aren't hotels, but.
Zero.
Well, people, nobody rents out their house on Airbnb?
By by the HOA rules, nobody's allowed to do overnight nightly rentals.
Okay, that answers my question.
I thought we talked about putting Deer Springs. I thought Deer Springs.
Yeah, in the future, there may, it may happen with with claims expressed an interest in being able to do that and and some others, but. Under the the master development agreement for the majority of the town, nightly rentals are banned. Now, if this. If this. Ninety unit plus or minus condo type thing gets built up by the town hall. As was originally approved, but is no longer approved because their time has expired. If they come back with that, then, you know, that could be a potential for nightly rentals.
Mayor, can you say that again? Not the nightly rental part, but the originally approved. No longer.
Yeah, the 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 part of Hideout that is under the Mustang H MDA. And the HOA that supports that community preservation, they do not allow nightly rentals.
No, no, I understand that. I want you to talk about the.
The settlement.
Settlements.
So the settlement, you know, is proposed to be a kind of a condo hotel type of thing if that were to move forward. And they express an interest in doing nightly. We could potentially approach that.
Oh, that's not what I heard you say at all. Okay.
You're you're saying that approval, though, has expired, so they would have to come back.
Yeah, I mean, nothing's been built for three years. I mean, whoever comes in with that land has to come back again.
And my understanding is it's in the master HOA.
And so we would need the the, you know, the the master developers to agree. That that could be a nightly rental type situation.
Let me make sure I understand. Okay, I understand. We're talking about.
If we wanted to do that at all, then we'd have to approach them because they have, they have a right to, under the MDA, as I understand it. You have to review that, but.
So are you saying the settlement development itself, which was already approved for the ninety units of density? And the three buildings and the four stories high? Is that, is that approval still stands? Is that approval good for?
No, there's, there is, the building portion of it is not the the the. The approval to be able to build something like that is still valid. Okay, it carries, it goes with the land, but the approved construction has expired. And so they would have to come back through planning commission and council to build.
And start over again.
Right, but but they do have a right for those units.
Understood.
So you're saying that density follows.
Density, the density follows the land, but but what was what was blessed to get built. It has to go back through the process again.
Okay, I know we're getting a little off track here, but if 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 you can't build the density under the current.
I don't know. That's a separate issue, Jerry. We'll have to review.
Yeah, sorry, wandering off. Yeah, sorry, wandering off course when you mentioned property that is very close to my house.
They're entitled, Jerry, regardless of the code, because it was, you know, was entitled back when it was allowed.
Well, and it's, it's a existing zone that wasn't, wasn't affected, so yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so coming back, um, there is an interesting opportunity for us. Um, where we could create, although this, the statement here says renewal, we never had one. So this is, that's, that's, uh, that's phrased incorrectly in the, in the language on your screen. But there is the, the opportunity to create an enterprise zone. And Jan's going to talk about what that is. But basically, there are incentives, uh, from the state to make it attractive to invest in, uh, enterprise in a community. Uh, it doesn't mean we have to allow it. If we create a zone, it means that if we choose to allow, um, commercial type development, enterprise type development, that those enterprises could be eligible for funds. So Jan, um, and that's about as much as I know without getting into trouble. So I'm going to stop and let Jan talk about it.
Okay, will you, um, allow me to share my screen again?
Yeah, I haven't, I can do that. If I can stop my sharing, there we go.
Okay, are you seeing enterprise zone tax credit?
No. We're not seeing you share anything at the moment.
How about now?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a program for rural Utah, and it's been going on for a few years. Um, it was not going to be extended, but they did extend it with the COVID issue. It's, is to incentivize, um, economic development, which is what we need to do. Um, so this allows us to put the entire, or what our resolution is, is to put the entire town into this enterprise zone designation that allows people to get tax credits for, uh, new full-time positions, for, um, jobs, creating new jobs. And, um, there are some infrastructure credits for, um, spending, um, investment and planned equipment, buildings. Um, this would go for four years. So it would start in 2021 and, and extend to 2024. And it's, it's basically just tax credits. It, it's a nice incentive for anyone trying to, uh, start a new business and hire new employees. And it doesn't take, uh, change any of the zoning in town. It's just, it's, it's an overlay.
So Jan, help me understand, because we don't, I mean, how would someone take advantage of this? A home-based business or, you know, we don't exactly have um, a lot of places for commercial to happen within the existing town?
We don't, you're right. Let's say somebody decides we manage to get neighborhood commercial, um, worked out. We get a plan in place and they spend 750,000 on a building. They could take that, uh, tax credit if they were able to put the building in within the next four years.
Would it also, um, if a, a developer that has an existing approval, if they say, hey, now that this enterprise fund is there, maybe I'll change from, you know, what I've approved for and seek instead of residential to put in neighborhood commercial or something else? Um, you know, they'd have to get re-approved. But would that then be an incentive for them maybe to pull away a little bit from the residential and maybe add some commercial?
Oh, yeah, it would actually. So it's new building and it's job creation. So it's very, uh, focused to economic development.
And, and up top, Jan, um, it said qualifying businesses. Uh, are those the ones that are listed in the bottom section? Or are they every business that's, let's say, not construction? Or how is that, how does that work?
Construction jobs aren't eligible for job creation. Um, in this additional information section, you can see that, that they have some, some things they've called out of it.
What's the retail business in NI, NIAX 44 and 45?
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what NIAX is.
NAIC National, that's the national, um, code for your employment. So that's your category as an employee, um, like, uh, you know, an office worker versus a construction, that National, um, Association of, um, I think codes.
So Ralph, what kind of business would fall into 44 and 45 designation?
Um, there's a whole list there by series, and I don't remember what the 40, I, I would know offhand right away. Um, we could look that up.
And just. Basically, they're, what they're trying to do is not, they don't want, um, they don't want seasonal workers, temp kind of stuff, um, because they're trying to create, you know, permanent employment. So that's why they have restrictions on that. And public utilities being utility public, I'm not allowed to get public money to go do public stuff, additional public money, because they're basically nonprofits.
So Summit County has designated the entire county as, uh, enterprise zone. And there are a few places in Heber and a few places in Midway, but I don't see a downside to this.
So guys, the NICS code 44, 45 is retail. So it's retail merchandise uh, and services that are incidental to the sale of merchandise.
So like the outlet mall would be excluded if someone wanted to come in and put in a strip mall of some sort that wouldn't, uh, wouldn't apply?
That's retailing merchandise.
Yeah, so that would be excluded.
That's right. Yet, yet that's one of the hardest hit industries in the, in the US. So isn't that, isn't that odd?
Yeah. But restaurants or office space that, that would seem to be fall into this? Not that I'm sure you could get a restaurant to, you know, somebody interested in building a new restaurant right now.
Right. Yeah, as I said, I don't see a downside to this because it, you know, all of it has to go, you know, whatever construction or retail or whatever we, we develop has to go through the, the planning and be approved by the council. This is just an incentive package that we're jumping into at the last minute that could help out.
Now, I think we would still need to have a zoning conversation if someone wanted to come in and put in something in something that's zoned right now residential only. We'd still have to go through a rezone.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this, the, the, this doesn't guarantee anybody anything.
Yeah.
What it says is if, if we find a, in an appropriate partner with an appropriate, um,
Project.
Project, and we wanted to do that, you know, by doing, by, by passing this resolution, we could quote sweeten the pot to encourage them to come do those things because they would be, uh, entitled to, you know, getting the, the benefits from this, from this, uh, enterprise zone. But it doesn't say we have to say yes.
Any downside to joining this, signing up for this program?
Our, our belief is no, Chris, and as Jan said, the entire county of Summit signed up, the entire county. And then they're just picking and choosing.
Yeah, from a legal perspective, I don't see any downside.
Okay, that one's easy.
So, you know.
Press the easy button then, huh?
One, one of the, you know, one of the, you know, one of the reasons that, uh, that, you know, we, we are blessed to have Jan with us is that this is one of the areas that we wanted to work on from the very beginning. Jan and I first talked about her opportunity here was how do we go figure out where money comes from and incentives come from so that we can do a better job as a, as a municipality and in generating, uh, the revenues needed to maintain the, the, the infrastructure of the town and encourage, uh, things to come. And this is one of them that she's, she's put her fingers on. So good job there. And I think it's, you know, I think it's to our, um, I think it's to our advantage to go ahead and, and have it out there. No downside, no, again, doesn't force us to say yes to anything, but does give us the opportunity to, to have a great discussion if somebody comes with a project.
If we move forward with this, we probably also want to socialize it amongst our existing landowners that this is available to them.
Yeah. Yeah, we would certainly, um, encourage them to bring ideas. So, um, so this is the resolution. Language pretty straightforward. You know, whereas the town of Hideout, uh, desires to encourage and promote creation of jobs and sustainable wages within town. Instead of Utah, by through the governor's office of economic development, allows, uh, rural communities to create an enterprise zone. And we qualify as a rural community. Said zones are established to encourage community investment in industrial and commercial districts in the cities and towns to stimulate and strengthen economic development, individual job growth and competitive wages. And whereas the town Hideout deemed such involvement and investment as an investment in its future and is important to continued growth while being an economic strength of town. And as an integral component to create employment, living wage opportunities in the town, we would resolve to, uh, by the town council, uh, that, uh, we tend to seek approval from the governor's office of economic development to enter into said enterprise zone by adopting, uh, by adopting by resolution, said application and hereby approves the same as attached exhibit A. We have a blank exhibit A here, although we don't, although Chance filling one out. Uh, it's not filled out here, but that's the intent. And if we're happy to do that, then again, I would need a motion to, uh, approve the resolution in a second.
We'll also move.
I'll second.
Is that, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Me, Carol.
Hey Carol, thank you. So I could, I'm not seeing all the faces and everything at the same time, so.
Right, I've, I've got internet problems, so.
You're doing fine.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We are on our way to becoming an enterprise zone. That's very exciting. Um, okay. Uh, the next one, there is, um, there is no document, uh, in support of the next item, but I am pleased to report, um, that we have, um, two new candidates for, uh, for, uh, uh, planning commission, sorry. Um, I'm looking for my, my email here that has the info that I'm looking for, sorry. Um, no, that's not it. It's supposed to be an email. There it is. So, um, we have with us, uh, we have two new, um, two new potential people where, uh, which would allow us to, to complete the planning commission and also have an alternate. Um, and based on our, um, turnover, that's, that's a good, that's a really good thing. So, um, we have, um,
The planning commission seems to be the batter's box for town council, so.
Well, uh, not necessarily everyone on the planning commission wants to be on the town council.
All right.
Based on discussions I had with some of the members, they're perfectly happy being there. So, um, so we've got, uh, Glenis Tehansky with us. Uh, Glenis, I'm gonna, uh, I don't know if I said your surname correctly. Um, but, um.
You're not sharing that email if you thought you were.
I have, no, I'm not trying to share it.
All right.
I just wanted to, um, introduce Glenis and have her say a few words about, uh, her interest and all that. So I think you're.
Yeah, but.
You're, you're available to speak, Glenis.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, I, you did say my last name correctly, Tehansky. Um, and we moved to Park City three years ago. Um, we'd been visiting Park City for many years. Um, and moved here in August. We live in Shoreline two, phase two. And, um, I was on the planning commission in Buckingham Township, Pennsylvania for 10 years. And, um, so I always wanted to get involved that way again. Uh, my background is in, I, um, have a, an undergraduate degree in agricultural engineering and a master's in biomedical engineering. And, uh, haven't really been doing any engineering lately, but, um, still in the medical device area. And, um, that's kind of about it. Anything else you want to know?
And we're in, I, I think you do live in Hideout, right? Where in Hideout are you living?
Um, in Shoreline, phase two.
In phase two, okay.
So Glenis, this is Ralph. I remember when you sent your interest to the planning commission. So glad you're sticking with it. Um, sounds like you have a great background. I think you said 10 years in Buckingham, if I remember correctly, on the commissions there. So terrific background from what I could see anyway. Thanks.
Any other questions for, uh, Glenis from, uh, council?
Oh, this is Chris. Oh, sorry, Jerry.
No, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Glenis for coming forward. Um, you know, I'm impressed by your background. Um, but also, you know, delighted that you're interested in, in, um, serving on that body for the town because, you know, we, as Jerry kind of joked about, it's been a little bit of a revolving door there, uh, on our planning commission. And we're always looking for qualified, um, individuals, especially if you're a resident, even though you don't need to be. But we're always looking for, you know, tapping into the talent that we have for all the people that seem to be moving in and, uh, and becoming part of the Hideout community. So, so thank you for your interest.
I was going to say you've, you, you already have a lot more experience than most of us did when we started on the planning commission. So I'm, I'm glad to hear the depth of experience you bring with you. And it's also good to have another part of the town represented.
Good. I, I will warn you, however, um, that, um, Buckingham was, uh, uh, anti-development. I know there's not much left in the town to develop, but, um, I guess just so you know where I'm coming from.
Was Buckingham a small, a small town?
Um, it was large land-wise. Um, and I, there were, I don't know, yeah, there were probably 20,000 people. But it was, it was a, it, it was pretty large land, land-wise.
A lot of, um, agricultural land, uh, and open space.
Yes.
You know, undeveloped natural spaces.
Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of preserved land.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Glenis.
Mm-hmm.
And the, uh, the second person who've come forward is Rachel Cooper, who I'm. And the uh, the second person who have come forward is Rachel Cooper, who I'm, I'm guessing um, is related to Brian in some way.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, Rachel, thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone, and yes, I am married to Brian Cooper. Um, we moved here about a year and a half ago from Maryland, and we live in Shoreline One. My early work experience was actually in real estate appraisal. Um, so I really think I have a good understanding of values of houses and, and everything. Um, but most of my career was actually in writing. And we lived in the DC area. I actually began a website there, writing about Washington DC. And I managed the website, all the content. Um, I really enjoyed exploring the city and getting to know the different neighborhoods and really got into writing a lot about urban planning and um, I've kind of always been in, interested in urban planning issues. Um, I've written three different books about Washington DC, so I mean, I have very different experience from, from Glenis, because I mean, I was focused on much more big city kind of environment. But I've always, you know, had a strong interest in urban planning and I really love living here. And um, I have, I think, some good ideas of ways that we might be able to find uh, some ways to make money for the town. And I'm ready to share some of those, but I guess I'll start with the planning commission meetings and
Cool.
Some suggestions, so.
Thank you, Rachel. Questions for Rachel? Comments for the council?
I thank you for your interest.
Rachel, I look forward to working with you.
I'm looking forward to it too. Yeah, I can just repeat again for, for Rachel, you know, how excited I am to have, you know, relatively new resident, again, with a diverse background and, you know, ideas to bring forward. This is exactly what we need. We are a young, about-to-be-small-city with, um, that's had to grow up, is having to grow up really fast. So, you know, bringing, bring, um, expanding our talent pool and having um, a kind of diversity on the planning commission is, is, is all good.
So Mayor, help me out here, because the original, the formation of the planning commission was five members and two alternates. Do we, with these two candidates, have all seven positions?
No, we will have five can, five members and one.
One alternate, so we're still seeking an, an additional alternate?
Yes, we are.
It'd be great if we get someone from Soaring Hawk. We don't have any representation from there.
Actually, we do. Uh, um, we have um, we have uh, the last meeting that we added, um, my mind's on a blank.
Ryan.
Ryan, yeah. Ryan Sap is Soaring Hawk.
Oh, okay.
Oh, great.
So.
I'd like to welcome Rachel also. She's my neighbor and I'm excited for her to be on planning commission.
So, so council, I am, um, I am recommending to council to uh, to get your uh, uh, consent to appoint uh, um, Glenis to be uh, the, the, the member and uh, Rachel to be the alternate for uh, for the planning commission.
Dean? Do you want a uh?
I don't need a vote. I just need a, uh, to, it's not a voting item. I just, I'm, I'm supposed to uh, uh, to not make appointment, to make appointments with the advice and consent of council. So I'm looking for the consent of council.
Is it both advice and consent? I, I thought it was just advice, but Polly can keep this right there.
It's consent.
There's consent.
I can't, I can't do it if you don't want me to do it.
Okay.
If, if enough of you don't want me to do it.
Okay.
Well, I didn't say anything so far. Yeah, I would say it's a resounding yes on my part. Thanks, Rachel. I didn't say, I didn't say thank you for reaching out as well as I did to Glenis, so good luck.
And I'd like to welcome Glenis also. I didn't say anything, and I approve of both of them.
Thank you. And Jerry, I think I heard you say yes before.
Yes.
Uh, and Chris?
Yep, thumbs up.
Super. Well, thank you both ladies. We're looking forward to having you with us. Uh, Rachel, don't be, uh, don't be put off by the uh, the alternate thing. Um, uh, these guys will tell you the alternates uh, attend the meetings, they uh, they um, participate in all the activities, and in cases where uh, the, the full commission isn't available, they vote. And uh, again, based on uh, based on history, um, you won't be in an alternate position for long. Uh, I'm sorry to say. It was good for you, but it just means we get more turnover, so. Um, and there's going to be, uh, there's going to be changes in the coming year, for sure. Because uh, we have an election coming up and roles turning over and so forth, so.
And not everyone shows up, so just like Bob didn't come, so you'll be voting, you know, as, as, you know.
As a full member.
Yeah.
Good bit of the time, anyway.
Yeah.
So. Okay, well, thank you both, and we're excited to have you on the, on the team and looking forward to all your ideas and energy. I'm sure you're gonna do a great job for us.
Thanks.
Thank you both. All right, I'm just going to
Thank you all.
Do a little muting here. Okay, that's all done, so that's good. Um, ladies, you are obviously welcome to spend the rest of the evening with us as we go through the agenda, but uh, it's uh, not required. Um, let me get back to the agenda, which I think I'm sharing. Okay, um, bills to be approved. It's item four. Polly um, mentioned to me, Polly, you're still on, right? Somewhere?
Oh yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Mentioned to me that um, in theory, uh, I don't need to have a vote to approve the bills. Can you explain that again? Uh, we've been doing it, but apparently it's, it's, it's an extra piece of work that we don't necessarily need to do.
Yeah, under, for towns, uh, you need to be able to see the, you, you have to show the budget at least quarterly. And um, you know, what I've seen it, you don't have to approve every single bill unless it's required by your procurement code. You know, if you're doing a contract over a certain amount, maybe you would. But you don't need, you should have this as part of your packet. And what I've seen it done, like for example, uh, for the town of Alta, they just put it in their consent agenda so that the council can see it, and then if they have any questions, they can bring up questions. And then, so you can do a vote, just saying, you know, the budget looks okay, but you don't need this like line-by-line uh, review like you've been doing.
Well, how do you guys feel about that?
I, I feel like we had more than one special meeting only to approve bills in the past, so I feel good.
There is that, Chris. That's a very good point.
But um, no, so we would see this uh, every month in our regular meeting. We would see the bills.
Still get the, the accounting.
Okay, and then we can go ahead and ask questions if we've got questions.
Yeah, and we can, you know, in our, in our quarterly reviews, and our second one is coming up. Uh, I don't know if Wes can have it all done by January, given the holiday season, but the February meeting, we would look at the, the first half budget. Um, and that would include all this stuff as well, so you'd see where everything is.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm definitely in, in support of that. It seems like it's working for Alta. We, maybe we should adopt that, that similar practice. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with it. I would like to know how my fellow council members feel.
It's fine by me as well. The only um, stipulation I would have is that there's been some times when we've been going through the bills that we uh, discover that something's been miscategorized, and I don't want to miss that um, as well. And sometimes it takes going through it to say, oh, that, that shouldn't have been billed there. That should have been billed to this fund or something. So, you know, as long as we have some internal process that does a validation of the categorization of the bills, then I'm fine as well.
Well, the, the internal process has been uh, mostly me looking at it and saying, no, that belongs in the other bucket.
Right.
And I, I will, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not signing anything that um, that doesn't make sense to me. And, you know, Jan can, can state, she gets notes from me when she gives me the bills on, why is this here? Or move this there, and that kind of thing.
Good.
And we're, we're still gonna see this current format that we're getting, right? It took us a long time to get the pass-throughs, you know, pulled out, and so we, we like that.
Yeah, and my only point is that, you know, me looking at this, I, I don't realize that, oh, that's in the wrong bucket. You know, Phil does, and, you know, we've had many cases where we've reviewed this on the semi-line item, and Phil will recognize that something's miscategorized.
Okay.
And, and my only thought is that, not, not about you, um, you know, paying these in a timely manner and just doing it on your own, just when we, you know, into, at some point in time, what do the big numbers mean, you know, so to speak? So, um, and that may be Jan informing us as to where those big items are and what they mean. So, you know, can we pull those out at, at a, at a point to understand those? Maybe they're not part of the town council.
That's part of the quarter, that's part of the quarterly review, Ralph.
Fair enough.
Where you'll see.
Yeah. So wherever those come up, that would be my interest anyway.
Okay.
Right. And I agree also.
Carol. So I mean, the, the problem with this sheet, for lack of a better terminology, not really a problem because there's nothing wrong with it from a, from a listing standpoint. The, the, the problem is when you're reviewing it, you're seeing the spend side only. And so uh, so you're not seeing the revenue side. So, um, that's why, you know, the quarterly meeting is, is much, you know, more useful because you're seeing it against a, a, you know, a spend, a revenue projection. So for example, engineering expenses being nineteen thousand dollars, you know, are, what um, what's going on with those on the other side? What are we getting for that? Um, um, as a result of that engineering effort, for example. So, um, but thank you. Um, so with that, I am recommending that we pay the bills. And uh, we'll give you a review. Uh, I said, I think just February would be the earliest that we could do it from a standpoint of, um, given the holiday season, of being ready to do that. Okay, so the next one um, is uh, near and dear to all of our hearts. It's the impact fee, because we haven't talked about that um, for, you know, a couple of months now, so I didn't want you to get, uh, make, make you get, think it was all done. Um, when we um, passed the impact fee, we recognize that that, um, that some uh, developers had built a portion of the, of the universal infrastructure beyond Mustang. And as a result, uh, they were entitled to uh, 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 impact fee credit to um, offset, that could be used to offset the impact fees uh, being paid. Uh, and we have been working, Dan, with Dan's help, we have been working with uh, Western States, uh, Nate Brockbank, for his portion of uh, Shoreline Drive, uh, and which, which would entitle him to um, an, an impact fee credit. So this is, uh, this would be done for each uh, each developer that generated um, universal infrastructure. Uh, so that's basically uh, GCD and, and Western States. So, um, so here's the language. Dan, you want to take us through this?
Ah, um, hi, everybody. Good to see you again.
Did you miss us, Dan?
You don't have to answer that, Dan. It's a trick question.
Um, let, yeah, let's go through this. I think the, I think the mayor um, did a, a, a good job of saying where we are. Uh, as you'll recall, the town adopted that impact fee uh, enactment back in August. And um, yeah, you know, I mean, the, the mayor cheated up exactly right. Um, if you look at the ordinance that we, that uh, we passed in August, it specifically says that uh, that these credits will be available to, to other developers um, if the town enters into a, a, an agreement with the town. And so, um, here's uh, here's where the, we put uh, a pen to paper to make that possible for Nate. So uh, this document um, i- is specifically related to the portion of what we're calling Shoreline Drive. Um, uh, that uh, essentially goes from uh, the Deer Waters Project down to, uh, towards the, the Ross Creek Junction with Highway two forty-eight. And um, and we're acknowledging that in that recital C there that uh, the developer, Western States, uh, well, I guess uh, we're, uh, we're referring to the developer. In this case, it's Deer Waters LLC, who's an affiliate of Western States, who is uh, the, the entity that's actually building out the Deer Waters Project. Um, that, that they built that portion of the public street. We uh, recognize in D that it's what's called a system improvement, um, under the terms of the code. Uh, that it's, yeah, thank you, Mayor, if you can scroll down a little. I, in, in E, uh, recognizing that that's uh, that that street is recognized, is, is reflected in the IFFP and also in that ordinance. Um, that we have an obligation to reimburse. Um, and uh, and actually, I think that, I think that H should actually be nine point one rather than nine point two. I think, uh, I think I may want to uh, change that. Um, uh, but in any event, the uh, the or, the impact fee enactment contains language that allows us to reimburse uh, or to, to uh, provide those credits. Um, if you can scroll down a little more.
Yeah, I was just making a new section here, Jen, Dan, so yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, I did catch two other typos after I, after I sent this off today. And so, um, i- if the, if the council votes to approve, Mayor, I can send you two other changes before you execute.
Okay.
Um, okay, so then getting into the substance of the, of the agreement. Um, the uh, this paragraph two uh, talks about the developer's obligations in constructing that road. Now, it's my understanding in talking to Ryan uh, Taylor that the road is essentially uh, completed, that there may still be some, some punch list items. Uh, but I think that um, that, that this, this uh, contains developer's obligation to, to build that according to um, to project standards. Uh, and I, I understand that that has, that has happened.
Yeah, the road is, the road is complete and open to traffic. Uh, the only thing that really needs to be done is the work that needs to be done in the uh, in the easements on the side of the road, Dan, that's because they're still building.
Yeah, yeah, Ryan indicated there are still some punch list items that need to be addressed before he formally accepts it. But yeah, but I, I, that's my understanding that it's, it's largely done. Um, so, so three and four again talk about how the developer will uh, work with the, the town engineer and it kind of follows standards. Um, five uh, is the calculation of the impact fee, the credit amount. And the way that this, this, uh, was calculated is by, um. Uh, taking measurements, uh, Ryan measured the linear feet. That, uh, Western States constructed. And, uh, in our IFFP, uh, the, the, uh, engineer, our consulting engineer. Who who developed the IFFP, Brent Bittura. Uh, identified, uh, a construction cost of a hundred seventy-eight linear feet. Uh, for for construction of that road. And so based on the four thousand three hundred or four thousand four hundred thirty-five. And a half feet that, uh, that the developer constructed and that cost it, it works into a impact fee credit amount of seven eighty-nine five nineteen. Six, uh, and seven. Uh, talk about, um. Yeah, uh, developing it in, uh, or or constructing in accordance with town's, uh, standards. And particularly relevant is, um. Uh, in section seven, is posting a warranty bond. When the, uh, when the, uh, road is completed. Uh, I, 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 that, I I am not sure of, I I didn't check with Ryan to see whether the warranty bond has been completed yet, but that would be. Uh, an obligation, a- as we'll see down below, um. Uh, to, uh, to, uh. To u- utilize the impact fee credits. So moving on to section eight, uh, in in section eight A, there are the conditions that the developer has to meet in order to be able to use these credits. Submit notice that the improvements are complete, post the warranty bond. Have the roads as, or the road be accepted by the town engineer and then provide the as-built. Uh, for that. Then, uh, then B talks about what the developer can do. He can use these credits to, uh, to offset. Any other transportation credit or transportation impact fees that might be imposed in connection with with development. So. Uh, the important reason that's important is you you may recall, there's, um, four types of impact fees. That were assessed, uh, transportation is one, then in addition to that, we had impact fees for storm drain. Sewer and water and and these credits would only be applicable to the transportation impact fees. Uh, the the town is in C, uh, town is going to keep track of these impact fee credits. And and make sure that, uh, we account for the use of them as building permits are pulled and and these credits are utilized. Uh, then D talks about the developer's right to, um. Assign impact fee credits. So this is, this provides, uh, a developer an opportunity to, uh. Assign these to another developer, you know, obviously that doesn't multiply the impact fee credits if. If the developer assigns a portion, then i- in the ledger that the town keeps, that would be reflected that, you know. Hundred thousand dollars in credits were assigned to developer X. That reduces the amounts that Deer Springs or Deer Waters LLC has available to use and and provides credit to a third party. Then, uh, nine, the developer is agreeing that this is, uh, full compensation for construction of the road. Ten, the developer agrees, uh, that, uh. I- in connection with receiving these impact fee credits, the developer is not going to challenge the IFFP. Or the impact fee enactment, provided that if the town. Uh, im- imposes future impact fees or amends the IFFP or the impact fee enactment. And that, uh, wouldn't preclude a challenge to those, uh, actions. Ten, town will own the public improvements. The, uh. It, the the impact fee credits in number twelve accrue interest at the same rate we've identified in the IFFP. Number thirteen, this is just sort of a legal provision that says if if there's a breach in the contract. That the, uh, developer can come, can come back to the town and say, hey. Please give me the credits that I'm entitled to, but that's his, his only recourse. Uh, and then the rest is kind of. Uh, boilerplate provisions, I am happy to go through them if you want, but, uh, I don't think that they are. Real.
Well, I think the one council probably needs to look at is fifteen because it, um. Yeah, you know, it's, it doesn't go on forever, so we're, we're not on the hook till, you know, the year three thousand.
Yeah, and and the way that this works out is, um. These credits, the the credit amount based on what our transportation impact fee is in the IFFP as we've, uh. It was calculated and adopted in August, this works out to about a hundred fifty units. And so, uh, you know, presumably this will be exhausted. Before that seven years, uh, timeline expires.
Yeah.
Questions from the, from the council?
Hey, Dan, this is Ralph. How are you?
Hi, Ralph.
Good to see you, on video at least.
Right.
I got a question on the, um, was it a hundred and seventy-eight dollars a linear foot? Um, calculation, so, um, I'm just thinking myself, if you put a mile of road in. The cap, quick calculation I did, that would be nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So if I did two miles of road, that would be one point eight seven, uh, million. But the cost of of building a road is going to, you know, reduce over a certain. Length, you're going to get economies of scale. Do we take that into account? So. Um, you know, like a a quarter mile road, I can understand at one seventy-eight. But after I get, after I'm building a, a straight road at a certain point, um, you know, how do we, do we get any? You know, do we lower that number? How is that number and how is that number calculated?
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question, Ralph. Um, the IFFP, um. It identifies only a, a discreet universe of roads. Right? So there are only certain roads that are are termed system improvements. Um, within the meaning of of the IFFP, and so there's only, there's only a certain. Uh, quantum of roads that are eligible for these impact fee reimbursements. And that the total feat identified in the IFFP, uh, as, um. As being, uh, potentially impact fee credit eligible, uh, give me just a second, I'll pull it right up, uh, is. Is, uh. Nine thousand nine hundred, uh, linear feet. And so it's not like anybody, so so those are the only, uh, the engine, in other words, I'm I'm answering your question in a roundabout way. But the engineers identified the portion of the road that was sort of yet to be completed when this draft. Got going, I I I think it's completed now, but while the draft was in process, that road was not yet completed and so the road, the the engineer said, okay. I know where that road is. I know that it goes essentially from the the junction from of. The whatever that, I can't remember that street that the Maryland's on.
Shoreline, yeah, and, uh, res- uh, res- resurrection, what's the name of that downhill road? But yes.
I don't know.
Resolution, res- something road that goes downhill there, going to shore.
So the, yeah, the point, the point is that the the engineer knew, you know, the 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 to be built portion of the road goes from here to there. Uh, and this is, I can estimate the the cost of building that segment of the road. Now. In in connection with with building other portions of the road, the the IFFP has a really. Detailed analysis of what various segments of the road cost. But for the unbuilt portion that that he specifically identified, he assigned this cost of a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Uh, and so that's, i- it's, this is an engineering estimate based on the engineer. Uh, that he made knowing exactly where the road was and how it was going to be constructed and the conditions of construction.
And sp- and specific to this road.
That's right, that's right, specific, so the, so the, so this number is not, this number and the and the and the to be constructed. Uh, road identified in the IFFP is not hypothetical. We know exactly where it is and and the conditions for construction.
And and then, thanks, Dan, that's, that's good explanation. And did, uh, and then that credit goes back to, um, the builder or the developer in 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 for. For, uh, future benefit is, how does that exactly work based upon what I was reading?
So the way that this works is a developer, you know, presumably, this, uh, developer is only going to build system improvements. In connection with development of a residential subdivision that the developer is building. So when the developer builds these, he builds a system improvement, right, this road. And then adjacent to the road are a bunch of lots that he's going to build houses on. And when the developer goes to pull building permits for those lots. Uh, the impact fee ordinance says, okay, now you got to pay impact fee. You got to pay impact fees to contribute to, you know, the the reimbursement of all the system improvements that were constructed in the town. And the developer says, okay, great, but I've got a credit against the obligation to pay that. Because I built this segment of the road. And so he's got this little tally of impact fee credits that he can use until they're exhausted. And then once they're exhausted, he'll start contributing cash to the payment of impact fees, just like everybody else.
Gotcha. Okay, and that's why, uh, so back to my first question, that's why I was thinking. You know, if if the number per foot is really high, then the developer gets a bonus credit. To be used at a later point in time. So if the calculation isn't correct on the front end. Um, you know, it could either benefit or not benefit the developer in in the future case, so. Yeah, okay, fair enough. Thanks, Dan, for that, uh, for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Okay. I have a question, and that is because I do use that portion of the road. And, um. To me, that road was just recently built after some of our town codes went into effect. That road is very narrow. Um, I've had to actually back up on that road a couple of times if there's incoming, if there's traffic that's coming against me. Have we approved the width of that road?
Yeah, it was approved, um, you know, this, this whole project was approved in twenty sixteen, Carol. With those features, uh, the road that is constructed is is was, um, was the road width at the time. We can't undo that. Uh, we, what the engineer can do is tell us that it was built right with the right thickness and has curb and gutter. Uh, and that the, uh, and that the engineer who calculated the the dollars per per linear foot. Uh, utilized the the correct road width, uh, as well as the length to, uh, to generate that dollar, a hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Okay, so we're talking.
It was a narrower road, it would have been a smaller number. If it was a wider road, it would have been a bigger number just because there's more asphalt.
Right, I mean, I get, I get that, it's just, it's to meet, to meet the town requirements and with all the construction that's going on down there. I I just question the width of it. I mean, it's really narrow.
Yeah, and and, uh, well, I appreciate that comment.
You can undo that.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, Carol, but that, the, you, you're, you're, uh, addressing a different. Uh, topic than than what this particular agreement tries to address.
Okay.
So the, so the, so the question of whether, whether the, the. You know, the road widths that were approved at the time this project got its approvals were were good or bad is is different than. Whether the developer is entitled to credit for having built it according to the the, uh, approvals that he got when he got them.
Okay, and 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 I I think he deserves the credit. So, okay. Yeah, I'd like to piggyback onto that he deserves the credit because that road is the most important connection road that we've gotten. Since, you know, in five years that I've been here, that actually allows. Uh, the older part of hideout to connect to the newer part of hideout and people can. Get down to the park without going on the highway. It's, it's actually a very important system improvement for for us, so.
Right, and also for.
Support this.
For egress, I mean, it gives us our second egress onto the highway.
Yep.
Yep, exactly. So it's very important, system improvement, and I'm glad it's in.
Me too.
Any more questions on the language of the agreement?
Yeah, like I said, like I said, Mary, I do have two, two or three typos and and I'll send that to you afterwards.
And then, in support of that, it would be a resolution authorizing the mayor.
Oh, oh, Mayor, 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 can I just make one comment? Just, just so for the council's benefit, I don't know. That a develop, the developer or developer representative is on, but we did, uh, um, get this approved by the developer's attorney. And the developer's, uh, ready to sign this if if this is approved by the, by the council.
Thanks, Dan.
Dan, one other question, the seven years, is that, was that a negotiating thing between you and the developer's attorney or is that? More of a s- standard for this type of agreement?
No, that that was just the 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 length of time that 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 we thought was appropriate, given the the. The amount of credits that are available and the number of units that the developer likely is going to be building in the town. It seemed that that would be an appropriate, uh, horizon for for the developer to. U- utilize those and still have some, a little bit of a buffer to, uh. Make sure they have the opportunity, but again, like the mayor said, also ensure that the town's obligation to keep these credits on the book doesn't last forever.
Okay, thank you.
So, um. So Dan told you that story so we could tell you this one. Which is, uh. Is a mech- mechanism to authorize me to sign the agreement on behalf of the town. So this basically restates that, you know, we passed the impact fee in August, uh, that that the town's, uh. Allows the town to enter developers who who create system improvements. My puppy is 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 weighing in on this, you can tell she's tired. And, uh, so this is all the sort of the same, whereas is that we're in the other one. Exhibit A is the one we just looked at. So therefore we're resolving that all that stuff is incorporated and therefore you're, um. Um, I'm, you're, I'm not on video, so you're all right. I'm authorized to continue negotiations regarding the agreement where they're done, actually, so there's not much to negotiate any further, just sign. Um, so again, uh, to move this forward, it would be a motion to approve the resolution allowing the mayor. Of the town to execute development and public improvements, construction and impact fee credit agreement with Western States. Or Deer Waters LLC.
One, one last question, Dan, is this the first, um, uh, agreement of this type that we've had for the town? Or have we had others?
Uh, no, this would be the first one because, uh, well. Uh, sort of the first one. You'll recall that in connection with the, uh, the, uh, passing the impact fee ordinance in the IFFP. We, uh, adopted a reimbursement agreement, which is similar to this, but slightly different for with Mustang Development. Uh, pursuant to which Mustang Development is going to get a cash reimbursement, uh, for. When impact fees are collected. This is the first impact fee credit agreement for someone who. Someone other than the master developer who's contributed system improvements. We anticipate that there would at most only be one other agreement of this nature that the town would sign. Uh, because a- as far as the system improvements which were identified in the IFFP are concerned. Uh, in addition to Mustang and and this developer, uh, there's only one other developer who is, uh. Constructed portions of the system improvements within the town.
But it serves as a model for the next one or anything.
I think that's right.
Yeah, that's a good, good idea. Cool. Okay, thanks, Dan.
And just a point of clarity, I noticed that, um, Alicia's title was Deputy Town Clerk. I thought she was the Town Clerk.
I I may have had that wrong, I, if I.
She is the Town Clerk. So, yeah. We have-
Sorry, Alicia.
Kathleen is the Deputy Clerk.
Apologies, didn't, didn't mean to imply anything there.
At one point, she was when Allison, we're, we're doing turnover, but once we did move her to, to the clerk, when Allison-
Mayor, I think you've got that in words, so you could probably just make that correction.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And Polly, do you have anything to add to this?
Now, I, you know, Dan did a great job. I, I took a look at it and, you know, it makes, it's well done. And I'm going to set up, Dan and I will set up a meeting with staff so we know how to implement this. Since, and it won't get implemented until we, until the road is accepted. So, looks good. Thank you, Dan, for stepping up and-
Very, very helpful, Dan. And it's a great model for, for the next one as well, that, about. Okay, so again, I'm looking for a motion to, come on, machine.
I'll also move.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Well, yes.
Thank you, Will. Appreciate that. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that as well.
Yep, happy to do it. If, if, Paul, if you don't need me for anything else on this agenda, I might sign off.
Yep, you're good. Thank you. Be in touch.
Okay, good to see you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. All the best for the holidays if we don't talk to you.
Yep, likewise. Yep. Talk to you soon.
Okay. So the next item an ordinance requiring a use of consideration to adopt an order's required use of bins for recycling and trash. If you remember, we had quite a bit of discussion about putting bins into the recycle environment. I had conversations with our friends at Recyclops. They are, they've got no concerns at all about doing that. They've started that process in communicating with the residents. They've ordered the bins that have been required and they, we expect them, you know, the only thing they ask for, I, I asked them to get it done in December and they said, due to, like everything else in the world, the transportation challenges, they'd get them out in January and I told them that was okay. As Polly and I were chatting about this, it occurred to us that, you know, one of the things I've seen also in town is people who have more trash than fits in the trash bin will stick boxes on the ground or whatever next to the trash bin. And of course, the, the, the Wasatch County folks don't pick that up either. Because they just use the gripper and pull the bin. And so, we started talking about saying, what we really should do is, is come back and, and get a, get a, an ordinance in place requiring containers for both garbage and recycling. And, and, and that, that when you're not allowed to just put recept, not allowed to put your stuff on the street next to your bins.
I think there's a third category here as well that my neighbor uses, and I think it's a organic composting, something I, I know the guy came and presented to council maybe a year and a half ago, but there is a third thing that, you know, a very small bin that could sit up on the driveway as well. So, whatever we do, we want to make sure that we don't miss that one.
Okay. Polly, is there a way to, does, I mean, is garbage and refuse not cover compost, or does that need, do we need to add a line for compost?
We can add in compost if you think that's necessary. I would think that it's kind of refuse, but what kind, is it, do they use a big?
They use a bin. It's very small. It's about the size of a, a kit, of a bathroom trash can. So, it's not, not large at all.
How's that, how do you think that's going to work with snow plowing?
Well, if they put it in, in the street, it, the snowplow is likely to take it down the road, but, you know.
And is it covered?
It is covered. It's a sealed container.
Okay. It's up to you. I could, we could amend it just to say all garbage, refuge, refuse, composting and recycling shall be placed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that? Okay. I have, I have the word document up on my computer, so I will put that in. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question for the mayor. Since you had the conversation with Recyclops, are these bins roughly the size of our current garbage cans?
No, the ones they're offering are not, but they also, they're smaller, but they also, you know, allow you to get a bigger one if you want. That you would get yourself, go like going to Home Depot or those, or one of those kinds of places and getting. But the ones they offer are smaller, but that's what they have. So, if you have a lot of recycle, more than what this bin would hold in a week, then, you know, you may have to make a one-time investment in a, in, in your own version of a, of a trash bin.
Does Wasatch offer a smaller bin for trash?
Not that I'm aware of, Jerry.
I'm, I'm thinking, you know, there's only so much garage space, so if someone wanted to make a switch.
As well.
Yeah.
But these things are, the Wasatch ones are standardized and their little grabbers are all designed around that.
Yeah.
So, I think Recyclops doesn't have a limit on what you can put out, as long as you're putting out the things you're paying for.
Yeah.
For example, I'm, I personally missed the pickup.
I suspect you could get two bins.
No, no. Let me, let me finish my thought here. I personally missed the pickup that was the day before Thanksgiving. And today, I had an unbelievable amount of stuff to leave out for Recyclops. If we were to require the smaller bin, how, so are, I would not be able to put out any bags in addition to the bin, even though Recyclops can pick that up, because that's what we're paying for. We're paying for them to, you know, take our recycling.
Well, Chris, I would say, you know, I don't think we're going to run around and write tickets. Unless it's, you know, been out in the snow and, and trash gets strewn. So, on a day like today where there's no real risk of that kind of, uh, snowplow type damage, if you were to put out a plastic bag, I don't think that the, the, the trash police would come around and find you.
Or, or animal disturbance.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, you know, there's a lot of cardboard. I, we personally, I don't understand how, but we have a tremendous amount of cardboard at my house. I think it's too many Amazon packages, but, you know, it, that, they, they aren't going to fit, even if I have to break them down. I can imagine it might be difficult to get all that stuff into the smaller bin. My question is, what does this ordinance do?
You know, if you put it on top, I don't know that they would have an issue, because I don't think they're picking it up with an automatic machine.
No, they're not, which could be why they need the smaller bins, because they're humanly picking them up and, but, yeah, I just, I wonder, did, if we've had that, you know, being a, being a subscriber to recycling and I'm doing it, you know, even though it costs me money, extra money, it's super awesome to have someone pick up my recycling instead of me having to take it someplace. I want to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences, and I can think of two. One is, you know, losing subscribers because of the bin. It could become an issue. I'm saying it could become an issue. There's not enough garage space, or the people are limited by our ordinance. They can only put out what fits in the bin. It could be unintended con, unintended consequences in perhaps suppressing folks who sign up for this. And the other unintended consequence could be making a business condition, you know, regulating the recycle pickup so that we're make, making it difficult for this private company to, you know, make enough money to justify staying in hideout. I just want to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences.
I can address the second one, because they, they have multiple municipalities in which they are required to use bins. And regarding the first one, from a space standpoint, half a dozen garbage bags in your garage is probably more real estate use than, than, than an upright bin. But yeah, the size could be an issue. I, I, I don't know what the answer is, Chris, but it's got to be better from the town perspective. It's got to be better than having bags on the road.
I'm thinking from a town perspective. I'm also thinking from individuals' perspectives. Anyway, I, I understand why the town wants it. It's neat, orderly. However, I have, I've heard here, here say, you know, I, I'm going to say, and I, this may not be a popular viewpoint. I personally love those bags. I'll tell you why I love them. Because they're so easy to use. They fit into my kitchen garbage can. I just fill it up and as soon as it's full, I put it in my garage and it's ready to go. It's simple, easy. It makes recycling simple. I, I, tha- that's why, you know, I, I actually like them. I understand that if you're not careful, wildlife, you're not rinsing stuff or, you know, a bag rips, wildlife could get in there. It could be a big mess. Are we trying to fix a problem in town that we don't actually have by requiring the hard bins?
I promise you that if, if the bags stay on the street and it snows, it, it's a problem we will have. No doubt.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. Because they're going to disappear in the snow and they're going to get plowed. Or they're getting frozen in the ground and rotten. I mean, no, I guarantee it. Kent, I mean, this is not my opinion. It's the guy's opinion as well. I mean, they're very concerned about it.
Who's, whose opinion is concerned?
Public Works.
Oh, okay, Kent.
So, I'm, you know, and again, to your point, nothing says you can't use your little bags. All you do is you're tossing them into a bin when you walk into a garage instead of sticking them on the ground. So, I, I mean, it doesn't keep you from having your kitchen trash, just close it up and toss it in the bin. Recyclops is not saying they won't take it in a plastic bag.
I had eight bags full today. That's not going to fit in that little bin.
So, again, Chris, I'm, I'm, you know, we're looking at the ninety, ten. I can't resolve a hundred percent of everything. But I think it's, you know, we're not the only community in, in, in Utah to do this. In fact, we're one of the few that doesn't have this.
You mean that doesn't have the, the bin restriction?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're recyclers as well, Chris. This would, that's a tough one, because we typically, I can see us exceeding the bin size, particularly if it goes down. But I do see the fact that, you know, it could easily be strewn across this, you know, across the street, in, in the street during snow plowing. And it, it may create a, a larger problem either way. This is, this is not an easy answer necessarily. And I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards, you know, putting them in a bin simply to get them off the street. And so, you know, our guys are not, you know, plowing over them. I don't know if it should be a choice or not, but, you know, that's-
I, I can argue, because it's not an electric grabber picking something up, they shouldn't even be in the street to begin with, right? We have human beings who are coming and picking them up. I used to work, live in a community where the garbage people would actually go into people's backyards, drag their cans out, bring them all the way to the garbage truck and drag them back, because that was how they operated. So, the thought that people would be putting their bags actually in the street is not necessarily accurate. In this case, right? We, our, our Wasatch County cans have to be in or right near the street because that automated truck comes around and grabs them and dumps them. But the, this company that we're using for Recyclops, those are people that get out, walk onto your property, pick up the bags wherever you've left them, sort of near the curb. I don't necessarily think they would be in play for the snowplow. It's really, you know, again, I, I worry that we're over legislating, laden for something that hasn't happened yet.
Having driven around on Thursdays and seeing where the bags lie, I regret to inform you that, that there are multiple ones that sit on the street.
Well, Chris, I, I, I think what you're saying, we could solve this alternately by saying, no bags within five, ten feet of the, of the curb. You know, they have to be a certain distance away from the curb. That, that could-
But, okay.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what Chris is saying. You're saying that there's more than one way to skin the cat, and the other is to say, designate a location where the bags are allowable.
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Yeah, I'm actually, I'm trying to find a-
Goes away in the winter. You get, you get snowplow berm. It's all going to be stacked up on the top of a, of a pile of snow. And if the wind comes up, it's going to roll down the thing. I mean, come on, guys.
Well, clearly, Mayor, you want this to go through, that you're very passionate about it.
I am passionate about it. I'm, I'm trying to help our guys do their job. And that's, you know, that's part of my job, but you don't have to vote for it. If we, you know, if we decide to take a vote, you don't have to vote for it.
I, I want to pursue this i- idea of a designated bag location, because I, I'm with you, Chris. I mean, growing up, we had our trash cans had to be behind a, you know, a short fence, so they weren't visible from the street, but they were on the side of the house. The, the trash man walked up the, the driveway and collected them from there. If, you know, if my driveway is shoveled and my bags are sitting ten feet behind the, you know, the Wasatch can on a, you know, driveway that's, that's shoveled, is, is that a concern, Phil?
Jerry, we've already, you know, we've already communicated with these guys and they're already communicating with their people to, to put bins in. Okay, at the last meeting, you guys gave me permission to, to tell them that they had to go to bins. And so, we've done that. If you don't want to do the ordinance in support of that, that's fine. But, I mean, we've already started the path and people are making, making the investment to get bins and Recyclops is as well. So, you know, they placed an order and they're about to have, you know, fifty bins in stock in, in support of hideout. So, telling them never mind, I think is not going to please them anyway. And I certainly know that the, the, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what you want me to do at this point. I think, I think you guys are, you want, you want to see a spill? Well, you know, you want to wait till a spill, then that's okay. We can, we can arrange that. It'll happen. Not on purpose, but it'll happen. Just by the end of winter, there'll be, there'll be-
I, I don't want to have any, look, Mayor, I know you, you've made your, you made your point how much you're behind this. We, I, I accept that. I don't want to have barriers to recycling. Obviously, we brought recycling in. So if we could find some kind of compromise that, yes, use your bin, but when your bin is full, you're allowed to do extra bags or put your, or put your cardboard that's broken down next to it, so that you can recycle everything you have. We're not putting restrictions on it. I don't want that to be an unintended consequence of passing this ordinance as it's written.
I think that's reasonable, Chris. I think that's reasonable.
I see that Kent has raised his hand.
Yeah. So, let, let me find him and we'll let him, if I can find him. Kent, you're actually not on mute, so you're welcome to speak.
Okay, I just wanted to point it out.
Okay, I just wanted to point it out. Just like the trashcans, people just keep putting them out farther and farther in the road. The same thing will happen with the bags. I mean, every time we go around, even where we have communicated with people, tell them try to keep it back close to the curb, on the curb. It's constantly coming out farther and farther in the road. And then we've got people complaining because we're not plowing the road all the way back.
So, that's a great, really good example, Kent. I mean, in the winter, we get burns built up. Um, so by definition, in some some portions of the town, the road gets a little narrower. At least until we get a chance to cut it back. And so the so the barrels come out further and they come out further. So.
Well, the other thing I see is that when Wasatch County empties it and they they slam the thing back down, it winds up in the street, you know, sometimes sideways, knocked over, whatever, so.
So, I I, Chris, I mean, I take your point and I'm okay with with the the thought process of trying to figure, I'll get ahold of Recycle Ops and say, all right, you know, our people are concerned that this is not all gonna fit. Are you okay if there are additional products when needed, you know, that are uh, properly, you know, nearby, but not in? Will you get those? I'll check with him. What I'm suggesting is I'll table this and we'll come back to it next next meeting, cause it's getting late and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry to be the, uh, you know, the
That's your job.
Pain in the butt here, but, um, yeah, no, I think it's important. It'd be wonderful if somebody from Recycle Ops could attend if we had questions for them. I am concerned that, you know, I I it sounds like you've already worked this out with them, but I haven't had a chance to ask them that. And nobody in public has probably done that either, but I am really looking to find the right balance between, um, and I I do respect Kent's point of view and and the mayor, your your point of view. I just wanna make sure we're not, um, we're finding the right balance. We have the ability to be a little bit flexible with the amount of recycling that can be put out under certain circumstances. Um, so that we don't create a big mess, but I would not, I feel like we're kind of going in the wrong direction if if we're requiring this bin and the bin is too small and, um, and then we don't know the terms of engagement with the other bins with with the operator recycling. I would just like to say that as long as we're finding the right balance between, um, you know, meeting the needs of the town and also not suppressing the ability to recycle as much as possible. Um, then 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 I'd be okay. I just not not okay with it as it is written right now. I'm personally would like to see those concerns, you know, folded into it.
We'll table it till January. I'll see if I can get Recycle Ops to attend.
Yeah, meantime, they'll have, you know, ordered the bins and maybe we can get some specifications or, and maybe that's too much information, but um, like I said, recycling isn't optional uh, for the town. We're not requiring it. We, you know, we we had some community involvement and, you know, thanks to the folks that brought recycling in, cause it's, I think it's been overall good so far. We wanna encourage participation, not not put regulations in the way to to make it unattractive.
Okay. Um, moving on to the next item, Alicia reminded me today or this week when a kind of a stunning awareness on my part, that our next meeting is in twenty twenty one. And it was like, uh, this this aha moment. It's like, oh, man. We're finally gonna get rid of twenty twenty, which is a good thing. I'm all for that. Um, but to do that, we we have to, uh, adopt um, a resolution of ordinance. And in our cases, we've been doing ordinances, amending the town code, establishing a re- regular meeting schedule. And so, there's a proposal on the table tonight to, um, to, uh, a regular meeting schedule for the for the Town Council Hideout Utah, which, um, which would be the the second Thursday of every month as they are today. Um, we would reserve the fourth Thursday of every month for un- unfinished pertinent business uh, that can't wait to the next section, s- next session as we, uh, as we have now. That the meetings will be provided in accordance with the Utah Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, if it's a legal holiday, uh, you know, the meeting would be held on the the following day or when it, or although it doesn't say that, we have the right to move it to, um, you know, a time suitable for the council. Um, I believe that's correct, right, Polly?
Yep. So you can always have a second meeting. I mean, you can always call a special meeting. Um, so, and then same thing, yeah, for the legal holiday, you can, you could cancel the meeting or just send it to, like, I know next year is gonna be on Veterans Day, which then would move it to a Friday, which has some issues. So you could just call a special meeting for the following Tuesday, let's say, or the prior two.
Yeah. Um, I noticed that there's a C in here with no content. Um, I assume we should take that out.
Yes, I think, let me just make sure that we weren't cutting, I think we cut out some stuff. And maybe actually, I think the C should be in there. Because I wanted to, I was recommending that we take out some portions of the existing code, what's in your code right now. Um, having to do with like citizens being able to set agenda items. I did not recommend that.
Good.
Um, and I think there's something else. Let me just pull up your code real quick. I have, what is this, one ten? Fifty. So, I, oh, that was under two. Um, Alicia, do you happen to have that version? I sent you as a red line?
Yeah, I do. I don't know why it did that. It kind of messed up my formatting too. I don't know why I did that. So who should I send it to? Or do you want me to just share my screen? What do you want me to do?
Wanna just share your screen? That would be great. Yeah.
Well, let me stop sharing then, so you can do that.
And I think it was just to delete three. Let's see, or I don't know if you're renumbering these now.
Okay, I hope that's.
There we go.
She went to minicode.
Oh, and then, oh, sorry. It's different monitor.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And could you make it just a little bit bigger? Cause some of us are, some of my visually impaired.
How's that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, and then it, so what's new? So we took out the fourth Tuesday and then we put, um, that governing body will reserve the fourth Tuesday. And then in your code now, if you go down a little bit. Okay, so I would recommend that you that you delete or you amend your current code. If you're going to, you're gonna have to change the ordinance if you're gonna change, um, your regular meetings. So I suggest taking that out. You would just amend this ordinance. So there's no way to do it by resolution. Uh, and then also take out C. And then what you can also do is, um, or what I kind of mentioned to Alicia is once now we have this in the code, what we can do next year is she can just adopt, she can just by public hearing under the Open Public Meetings Act, uh, state when the actual meeting dates will be, but we won't have to go through this every year, amending this ordinance. So long as you wanna keep it this way, the second and fourth.
So I'm clear here. You're suggesting that C gets added back into the version that that Phil was showing us.
No. Which is in the, which is in the current ordinance, not be continued in the in the up in the one we're about to pass tonight.
Okay, so what I, so I can understand what, when we're saying that C, it's not in our town code, it's in the prior ordinance. Is that my understanding?
No, it's in your town code.
So what we need is a is a repeal of this piece of the town code in the ordinance that we're talking about passing tonight?
So it's not really a repeal. It's just you're amending your current ordinance.
Which will
So right now, and it's a little weird because as Alicia mentioned, the formatting, the numbering is a little different. But, right, and she'll fix that, you know, whatever is appropriate. But right now, it says, regular meetings shall be held the second and fourth Thursday of each month. So we deleted and fourth, and then we added in A. And then we added in that she'll, you know, of course, follow the Open Public Meetings Act. I mean, you don't have to do that, but why not put that in? And then we're keeping in, this B is current language. Uh, actually, yeah, that's current language. And then we're deleting from the current ordinance, the governing body may by resolution, and this bit about having any citizen put an item on your agenda. Now, if you currently, under your rules of procedure, if I recall correctly, you have the ability for the council to put stuff on the agenda. So you have another avenue to do that. It's just not codified, but it's adopted in your rules of of procedure. So I think if any two of you, it's very typical, and it actually might even be state code. I can't remember now. But if any two council members wanna put something on the agenda, they can do that. That's very typical.
Yeah, we had changed that. It used to be three council members to call a special meeting. Now it's two council members to call a special meeting.
Or or to place an item on the agenda.
Or to place an item on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah. So so that I'm clear, do we need to explicitly call out that we are removing this citizen, um, clause? Or do we just exclude it from what we pass? And it's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So, uh, what the form I'm used to is you do a red line of the current code. So, this way you can see exactly, Alicia's going to put a link to this ordinance in your code. And so anyone can look at this and say, oh, at that meeting, they deleted those items. So I always like to see the red, you always put in the red line from my standpoint, from a legal standpoint, because then you can kind of follow how the code progressed.
So it is explicitly calling out that we are removing those provisions?
Mm-hmm.
By virtue of the red line cross through?
Right.
Okay.
So, the and the reason, Jerry, that it's codified is that ordinances are supposed to get codified, cause they're supposed to be modifying the code. And when we finally got minicode in place, you know, they updated our code to reflect all the historical ordinances. So therefore, this language, the red line language, got codified.
Yeah.
And then when, then if we were to pass this this one with the changes, the the red line language will go away from the cut, from the code.
Got it.
And those are the stunning dates.
Uh-huh.
So, uh, very similar to this year, uh, adjusted by a day roughly. And that's really it.
Like, it looks good.
And personally, I think that, you know, when things slow down, you should be able to get to one meeting a month. Uh, the other towns that I work with that are similar size, they manage with one meeting um, a month. So, you know, you've had a lot on your plates since August, but, um, and hopefully also without the budget, that will enti- enables you to go back to one meeting a month.
Let's say probably talk less than we do. They don't.
Well, we we had all the
Do, but if if we can get better at getting you the content in advance, it can go faster. It's, you know, it's one of our things is we've gotta get better at getting you the information you need before the meeting so that we can.
Yeah, cause all of us, I I think most of us at least have, you know, regular jobs, so you know, getting something in the morning of the meeting, uh, you know, I just
Yeah, not gonna happen.
I I'm not gonna be able to review anything, so.
I understand and agree with him.
Yeah.
All right, so what I would need is a motion to adopt the res- the, uh, adopt ordinance, uh, defining the, uh, town council meetings for twenty twenty one uh, as, uh, as we just described.
The version that Alicia just showed.
Yes.
Um, yes, I'll also move.
And a second.
Yeah, I'll second it. Oh, Ralph. Okay, Ralph can take it.
Chris.
I saw you on mute. I didn't think you wanted to say anything there.
Yeah, you know, I happen to have a chance to to move or second anything, so.
Chris.
I'll take this one then. Yeah, I'm seconding.
Okay, I'll change that. Okay. Ralph? Adopt, not adopt?
Adopt it.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Um, okay. Uh, so the next item, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and share. It was suggested and, uh, that we we can talk about it or we can table it till next month, cause it's not super urgent. But, um, the question is, um, it's actually, it says no document in support of it because it's it's a discussion item, but the question is, is would, do we as a town want to have a, uh, town hall type meeting in which um, we could share perspectives and, uh, as, I'm not trying to have another hearing or a vote, but, um, do we want to enable a mechanism to talk about pros and cons for uh, with our with our constituents? Because I'm still not convinced that everybody is, understands everything appropriately, given the amount of rhetoric and noise that's been going on around us on the Silver Meadows or the you know, the the possible annexation. Do we want to do some sort of information sharing with the community around what it is and what it isn't? Um.
You mean like an open house kind of thing?
Yeah, like a, like an open, yeah, like a town hall meeting, not a, not a public hearing, but a town hall meeting where where we make sure everybody understands what it is. Again, we don't do, we don't have to do it now. We don't do it when we have the language for the, for the, for the, um, um, what's, what's it called?
Referendum.
Thank you, referendum. Um, but that everybody understands that a vote for yes means this, a vote for no means that. And what the yes and no is, is X, Y, and Z, that we're doing certain things, uh, or that we've done certain things. For example, we're doing an environmental study, we're doing a traffic study. At some point before the vote, we will have those. And do we wanna share those so that everybody understands that we've looked at the things, at some of the things that people had concerns about? Um, and, you know, have, um, uh, make sure that our community knows that we did do an environmental study and it found X or didn't find X. That we did do a traffic study and it recommends A or it doesn't recommend A, that kind of stuff. Um, that we did an economic feasibility study and it it suggests that by year seven, you know, it'll begin to generate X amount of revenue or whatever. And so that they they could make an informed decision at the time of the vote of the referendum. And I'm not trying, suggesting this to try and 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 get around, um, how people feel today. I just, in conversations I've had, I still hear stuff that isn't accurate or true. Uh, and so if people are making up their minds based on the fact that that, um, that I'm a criminal, I'd like to straighten that out. Um, so anyway, that's that's a thought. We don't, we don't need to, again, we don't need to make that thing happen today, cause we wanna get information to share. But I'm interested in your your thoughts on whether or not you think it would be of value to the community if we were to to, at a time prior to the to the uh, referendum vote, share the information from the studies we're doing and, you know, try and clear up any misconceptions that 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 residents may have.
As many communication channels as possible, I think, uh, you know, I'm in favor of that. Let's, let's be as communicative as we can. You know, I know the developers planning to do their own campaign, but I think the town You know, I know the developers planning to do their own campaign, but I think the town ought to do something as well. Where that's, you know, mail out flyers, uh, you know, town hall. Um, however many ways we can communicate the facts of the matter, um, I think is, is a good thing.
Yeah, Jerry, you said exactly what I was thinking, so, yeah, hundred percent behind that.
And can I just jump in, just from the legal's perspective? So, two things, one is, I think you all know, but the, uh, signatures. Uh, were certified, and so, the referendum vote will occur on June twenty-second. And we're moving forward with that, um, from the town perspective, just going through the other things we need to do to get that on the ballot. Um, and any town hall, just so for your information, would require, any public meeting would require equal time for both sides. So, it could really be a good, you know, wouldn't just be one side, it, you know, providing information. It would be both sides would have that opportunity.
Well, I, I don't know that the town is a side, but I, I, I hear you. I, I mean, we're simply, so, I mean, who's the opposite side of the town? Anybody else who isn't the town?
Well, Phil, I think we voted as a town to move forward. So, you know, we are a side, we are, you know, in favor of the annexation. So, you know, I would put it back to the, uh, you know, the folks behind the referendum and say, do you want to present something? Do you, do you want to present the, you know, for referendum side? And, uh, you know, if, if they want to, they can. If they decline, then.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly, yeah, I think the thing, I'm fine with that, Jerry, and I think that's, you know, they're entitled to that. By, by, by law. What I'm trying to think about, Polly, the homework for you is, how do we not turn this into another?
Circus.
Five-hour public hearing type event. Um, you know.
Yeah, there are ways.
Is to share information, not to, um, not to vote on whether or not you think what we did as a council was right or wrong. We're just trying to tell you what we've done and keep you informed, and that's, you know, we're not, we're not trying to, in. So, I, that, I don't know, we have to work on that. We don't have to answer that tonight, but the, the challenge is, with one of these things, is how do we keep it from turning into a, a? Uh, circus is, is a rough word, Jerry, but, yeah, a circus.
Well, yeah, as, as a person who was out there soliciting signatures and talking to at least thirty-some people. Um, I would say there is confusion. I don't think all the knowledge is, and, and, and there's a lot of interpretations based upon what ha- you know, occurred in the beginning. The lack of information flow, so, there's just a lot of opinions. And I think we should coordinate with, um, the new studies, uh, the three studies that absolutely need to come out. So, people are better informed, and I would agree, I'd say, whatever the forum, the best forum without making it a circus, so to speak. Would be a really great idea, um, but also coordinated with the information flow. That I think Nate and the town expect, um, or Nate, I think, said he would do. Um, and, and the, and the studies we've asked him to do, um, along with what our, our interpretation of those studies are. So, hopefully, the planning board will go, some of this information will go back through the planning board as well. And, um, they'll get a, a chance to evaluate this in a fair and, and hopefully impartial way. And that, you know, we can share that information back to the town. So, um, I, I do feel strongly that, you know, I, I, I'd be very honest with you, I don't think I'd make up my mind, uh, you know, on this. Uh, when I get a chance to vote, until I get all this information, and I think there's a lot of people like myself, um, in that process. So, um, I, I'd heartily agree that we, you know, get something going, maybe in a regular schedule. Maybe we coordinate it with the information that's coming out, so that we have, you know, p- you know, segments. Uh, lined up before this June twenty-second date, that kind of coordinate with good information. So that we'd have a, a better participation and a participation and a better informed, uh, hideout community.
And that's. And Ralph, this is Thomas, I'd capitalize on that and just say, yeah, I think that if we could present the studies, the facts, the information. I think in a clear, concise manner, I think that would be beneficial to the public, to the community.
I'm like, I'm excited to see the studies too. I haven't seen them yet.
Well, they're not done yet, Chris, so you're not gonna see it.
I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're waiting for the studies as well, you know, the town. We want to see, you know, want to see the results, and I very, agree, factual. Getting the, getting the, um, the facts, the real information out to the community is important. I do have a question for Polly. The election, is this a mail vote? You know, vote by mail, is a certain day the ballots will arrive, people will, you know, return them by mail or drop them off? In Heber City, you know, is this how it's gonna play out? Or is there some election process that's different from the one we've grown accustomed to?
Um, Alicia is our election specialist here, but, um, I mean, I'll let her chime in. But my understanding is it would be similar to a regular election. I, I don't see why, it's not any different, it's an election, so.
Yeah, if I may, um, we can hold it, let me turn my camera on, so, um, we can actually hold it, um. We could hold it locally, we can keep it here in the city, which is gonna cost us a lot, a lot less. Um, it, than if we went to the county to do it. So, if the county does it, they're gonna run it through machines, they're gonna have optical scan ba- ballots, things like that. I would suggest we just keep it small, you know, and keep it local and, and we can just do it in our office. And, and, um, I would suggest doing a by mail, a vote by mail. Um, it just, it's usually cheaper, usually yields more turnout. Um, yeah, what else? Uh, there's no, there, there's code, there's election code always that you have to follow. Ballots always have to be out by like three weeks prior to the election, um, things like that, so. And then they always have to be returned, postmarked a day before. Um, or before, obviously, or dropped off before, on or before election day. So.
So, we will align with absentee voters, knowing what their preference is, is that correct, Alicia?
Um.
So.
I don't, I don't quite understand, sorry.
Well, the ballot, the ballot will be out three weeks in advance.
Fair enough.
If the people can't get their mail, uh, for three weeks, then that could be an issue. Uh, they could always call the office and ask and give us a different address, as long as it registered, we could probably accommodate that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, if they're, you know, if they're residents who live here in the winter and live in Arizona in the summer for some reason, because they really, really like the heat. Um, then, then we could, if the post office isn't automatically forwarding their mail, then we could certainly try and find a way to accommodate those folks that may be there.
They could always come in the office, sorry, they could always come in the office and pick up a, a ballot as well. Um, you know, we could have those here, so.
I, I'd like to, like, have kind of a, you know, obviously, we don't want to spend more money than we need to, to have a good, fair, you know, election here. I think, that's how I feel anyway, but, um, I, you know, would like to know more about the logistics. You mentioned vote by mouth, Alicia, that's the first time I'd heard of that. I would just like to, maybe we can have a more in-depth discussion at our next meeting or soon thereafter about. You know, the voting o- o- options that you're mentioning, a locally, uh, held vote. I'm, I'm only familiar with the, the votes that Wasatch County, um, that, that they've, you know, the ballot, that. The ballots that come in the mail and et cetera. Um, so, w- when you're mentioning handling it locally, I, I'm actually not familiar with that at all, and I think we could use more information.
We've had, we've had local elections before.
In hideout?
Only impacts the, uh, it only impacts the, the town hideout, um, and it, um. Doesn't affect the rest of the county, um, you know, when election was held here, uh, in historically, in the past, for the town. Um, so, you know, we are a municipality, we're allowed to do that. You know, Alicia can certainly map out what it looks like for us, Chris, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I've been here for five and a half years, I've never experienced that local election yet, so, yeah.
Kind of on an odd cycle anyway. In fact, um, our election next, um, November is likely to be a local election. Uh, because unless there's ballot measures that come up, we're, we're off-cycle with, uh, with the, with the two-year cycles. So, we could be doing our council vote also as a local election. Depending on what Wasatch has on the docket for November.
So, if we do, um, these information meetings, which I'm totally in favor of. Um, I'm thinking ahead to, we'd need to do them prior to the election, would you do them like in May or whatever? Things may be different, you know, we may be able to, instead of just doing everything by Zoom. Um, that type of meeting, we might be able to actually have an in-person meeting. I mean, it's, everything's up in the air, but, um, I really want to avoid the circus that we had with, with, with our annexation meetings.
Having, having an in-person meeting does not, does not, Carol, uh, avoid a circus. I mean, there's, there's lots of.
It does if you invite the sheriff to, to participate.
I was gonna say, maybe you could just have it be open to town residents. Or, I mean, maybe that's too restrictive.
Everyone, unfortunately, unfortunately.
Yeah, but if, if we ask the sheriff to show up in an in-person meeting and stand at the back of the room or what have you, we're not gonna have any. Circus monkeys.
And, and I tell you, you know, that circus would be a wrong word for the hideout residents, at least the people that I've talked to. Um, were, were insightful, they were thoughtful, um, they were, um, intelligent. And they took an interest, that's our residents. You know, the o- the only way we're gonna get a circus is if we just let in every, you know. And I'm not sure how you police that, other than the way you were just saying, Jerry, you know, if you have a.
Of ourselves, I just wanted to know your interest, I think that's great. Uh, the earliest we could do this, really, is second quarter, because of the length of some of these studies. So, we'll, we'll, we'll circle back on this a couple of times, um, as we move along here. Um, and, you know, again, given that where we are in time, I think I got the input I needed, which is that you guys have value for this. And we'll keep, we'll start working on a plan for how that's gonna happen.
Good.
Okay. Okay, uh, we have one more item tonight on the, on the public's portion of the meeting. Um. If it's okay with you all to move on. Um, and that was, um, a, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about parking ordinance that came from, uh, the Planning Commission. Which basically said, don't park, uh, on any street anywhere. Um, and we, as a council, kind of said, that's probably not a good idea, because it's gonna happen, it's gonna be really hard to enforce. People have fam- you know, have family visit, or, uh, have friends come for dinner, or, you know, how do we, how do we come up with something more? Uh, more palatable, while still maintaining, uh, public safety. So, we challenged, uh, engineering with, with this project. Um. I, I'm not looking for a, a vote tonight, I just want to take you through this, because you just got this document. Um, but I want to kind of explain it, so that, uh, you can reflect on it, and we can talk about it next time and, and see if we think it makes sense. So, it's kind of, um, self-explanatory from a coloring standpoint. The redder it gets, um, the worse it is, kind of like the COVID stuff. Uh, we don't go to full green, we'll kind of use turquoise, um, is in lieu of green, but. Um, so, and then you'll see this document has it broken down into portions of the town, so you can kind of read it and see it. I know it's teeny on your screens, but it's actually teeny when you have it too, so, get your readers out. Um, so, uh, so you'll see up here in the north segments, for example, Deer Springs is in the, is in the blue, which is good. Uh, because they're, uh, they're getting built to our new code. Um. The, uh. The red, um. Is, uh, not a good idea. Um. There are some sections in orange that could be, um, could be acceptable in, in portions of. Of, um. Here, coming into the state park, but I'm suggesting no, because, you know, that's not right to the state park, because people will all park there and not pay their fee. So, I don't think, that's why it's in orange, you know, e- even though it's got the space to accommodate parking, we're not, uh. We don't think that's the right thing to do, because it's just, it'll cause everybody to park out there and, and cheat. Um, and then into Deer Waters is all red, um. Then we're picking up from there, um, again, Lakeview, uh, gets a pass, because it's being built to the new standards. But, you know, the rest of Deer Waters, uh, is not, um. Claim is not across the street, it was, it was approved to, to the prior standards, and, uh. Uh, Shoreline Phase Two, you'll see there's some dots on here, this dotted section. Um, and that is, until it all gets built out, I think we could accommodate parking there for events or certain, you know. One-sided parking at times, non-winter, um, until, you know, all the roads get built out, then it becomes a hazard again. So, you know, we've got some flex on that one, and on whether or not we'd want people to park there, um. Silver Sky, uh, which is where, uh, uh, I live, and Shoreline One, you see, it's all pretty much no. We're saying that, you know, at the end, uh, at the moment, at the end of Longview. Uh, where it dead ends, before, uh, before the plum properties go in, there's nothing there. So, again, if we needed to do something, we could do that on a temporary basis down there. Um, we've also said that, um. Non-wintertime, this corner of the street has enough room for, um. Emergency equipment to get by, if we had one-sided parking in the, in the, in the good season. So, if you were, if you were to have, you know, people here, where Shoreline has offside, you know, has parking pads up here. So, they should be able to accommodate some of that. S- Silver Sky has driveways, but if not, um. You know, we could accommodate and tolerate one-sided parking down here on the, on the corner area, as long as we're a few hundred feet off the corner. So, we're not, you know, interfering with the turns. Um, Storyhawk is a big no-no, it does have parking pads. Um. We're, um. This, this is reflecting this, this drawing here on the corner of, of Fox, Foxtail, Fox Run, Fox, whatever it is. Um, this is actually a cul-de-sac, so this is the, this is what was plotted originally, but they've since changed that. And, and it's out for a revision to get this correct. Uh, it's possible that there will be some space in here that could tolerate, because there's some lots that aren't gonna be developed in here. Um. Town Center, um, you know, it's in orange. Um, but, uh, here's coming down from, we don't, you know, obviously, hideout trail, we don't recommend anything there. Coming towards Silver Sky, uh, you know, it's pretty open, it could be tolerated here and up into, uh, Hideout. Hideout Cove, which is what this one is here. The roads are decent size and, uh, has enough, um, um, utility easement. Uh, emergency vehicles could, could get by if we wanted to allow that. Um, the section coming towards, um, Rustler, um, could also do it. Uh, it's, it's wide enough, the road is big enough there to tolerate that. Again, I wouldn't want to do it right off the corner, but, um, we could tolerate it on the golf course side, for example. Um, to allow some parking there. Um, and then here's the continuation of that, obviously not on the blind corner around the, uh, the maintenance area. And then this whole area pretty much qualifies for one-sided parking, and then when you get into Rustler, uh, it's a no-no. Uh, and when you go into where Chris is, it's pretty much a no-no.
Th- there is a blind corner there, as you're coming up the hill, just before that first entrance to Lasso, that, uh, I would.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, I would definitely not put parking there, because you.
Yeah, I agree. There's a rise and a corner.
So, so that's kind of what these guys have drawn for us for consideration. Golden Eagle is a bit early. Um. Uh. Other than the one road that currently, is a piece of which exists, that pretty much the rest, because it was, again, approved under the prior code. They're recommending nothing there. We gotta review that when we, as we, because we're working with those guys to see if we can make some changes on the road with some stuff, but. Um, so that's, that's, I just want to share this with you, uh, give it a review, give it some thought. And we'll come back in January and talk about, um. Which pieces are we okay with and, and then we can make a proposal around, you know, seasonal one-sided parking or whatever.
So Mayor, I did get a chance to look at this a little bit, and there was a recommendation in Rustler. That potentially you could add some parking places in Rustler. Wh- what would that look like? I mean, that's HOA-owned.
Right, it would, it would require agreement from the HOA to take some common space and put in parking pads. Much as they've done in, uh, Shoreline and, um, um. Uh, in Deer, Deer Waters where they built parking pads, there is some real estate that could be. Repurposed if they want, if they were willing to, you know, give up a bit of green to have the parking.
Yeah, I, I think that, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, sorry, Jerry, I, I just wondered if, if, if such a thing were happening, who, who pays for these parking pads in Rustler?
Well, Chris, we haven't quite got to that yet, but the first.
Okay, just curious.
First would be, would you be willing to allow it to happen? And then we could figure out, um, you know, again, maybe some, some. Um, bilateral agreement between the, the town and the HOA to, to share some costs or.
Part of the, part of the problem in Rustler is it, between the houses, you either have a, an electric pole. Or a all west. You know, box. So y- you couldn't really do any parking between the houses, so you'd have to find, as you said, some common space areas. That might could accommodate.
And, and Jerry, we've done some looking and we have identified some spots where I think we could get, I don't know. Somewhere between, somewhere in the range of minimum six and maybe as many as ten. You know, off-street parking spots.
Just one other que- question. I, I know we've got a lot of construction, you know. Somebody starts building on a lot, there could be, you know, contractors, subcontractors. Needing to park nearby for a, like a year. We can't ignore the fact that, you know, we're still growing and that they, we have all of that to deal with, not just the residents needing to park and have guests and. You know, and visitors and, but we have construction workers. In fact, some of our. Greatest parking challenges, I feel like, are from those crews that are out, uh, doing the work. We're gonna have to somehow find a solution.
And Chris, I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't accommodate them during construction hours.
Maybe through a permitting process where we could revoke their, revoke their parking permit if they're not following the rules.
There's things in there, the, the thing about them there during, during, you know, working hours is they're available to move their vehicles in time. Right? The issue that really becomes a, a crisis is when they're parked. When cars are parked and there's no one there to move them and the emergency guys need to get in. So we can, we can find ways to work with, with the, with the construction crews. To, uh, to enable them to be there from seven in the morning to six at night or whatever it is. Um, recognizing that they can't just walk away and leave cars.
One of the things the planning commission version of this contemplated was requiring those construction vehicles to park. At least partially off-street. So, you know, they're, they're doing construction, they've got, you know, the, the. We're not worried about killing the grass, because.
Right, two, two wheels up on the curb and.
Exactly, yeah.
That kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's important too. No, I, I actually love, I've read this too, because it was fa- kinda fascinating. But, but yeah, we, we have to figure out something, uh, because the relative free-for-all, it's been. I don't know how many times I had to call Kent to complain I couldn't get down my street, because I had people on both sides. Yet, I realize it's important that, you know, the crews can come to work during approved, you know, construction hours. We have to find a solution that works and that it's just not this constant pain. Um, you know, of, of different people coming, not knowing the rules, parking wherever. We, we've gotta figure out some kinda solution, maybe through this whole process of, of our new parking rules, we'll. We'll try to get that sorted out, so it's not so painful all the time.
Yeah, it is, um, extremely challenging, Chris. I mean, we, we. Down where I live, there were two houses being built on opposite sides of the street for.
Exactly, for a year.
Time and, you know, Kent did a very good job explaining them very simply. The rule is whoever parks first is the side you park on.
Yeah, I tried to do that on my street, right? And I argued with different people at different times and.
Didn't work.
It's exhausting. We, I think we just, if we're going to allow it. We're gonna have to be very specific. Here's the rules, you're parking on the left side of the street, that's it. You can't park on the right side. Or, we're gonna issue you a permit. Here are the rules. If you don't follow, we're gonna remove your, re- revoke your parking permit and start giving you parking tickets.
Yeah, well, we now have additional, um, police presence can enforce some of this as well. Uh, I, I can't count the number of cars that they've already stopped and had conversations with. In the short time they've been here. It is rare that when they're here, that, uh, that, and I'm in town, that they are actually, um. Out of their cars and having a, a chat with a resident or two, so, uh.
It's been good so far, uh, yeah.
It seems to be slowing things down. So it's, it's, it's working in the right direction. All right, so I appreciate the input on this. Again, I don't wanna drag it out tonight, do some more thinking. I think that's a great point, Chris, about. How do we, how do we make it so that they have no choice but to comply? Um, I, you know, I know that when the fine gets up to about a thousand dollars, they start getting nervous.
Maybe we should just start at a thousand dollars.
Um, I know, you know, the house next to me on my side of the road. Uh, the builder finally put out signs in English and Spanish that said, no parking in front of his job. Keep his guys from doing it, because he got tired of getting smacked every time they did it. You know, he's not there twenty-four seven in his Subzar and, you know, and we kept digging him, and so. He tried to explain to them that they're parked next to the mayor and he might notice, but it didn't seem to matter.
But I make a comment, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but we keep, we're talking about daytime parking. There's a lot of issues still with nighttime parking and wintertime parking. Where I live in Shoreline, um, you know, it's all redlined and I spent a long time today looking at this. I thought it was a ve- very interesting report. But we need to deal with all the, all the residents who do wanna have guests. Who do wanna have people that come over and where are they gonna park? Not just the daytime things, you know, like, like at nighttime.
That's what, that's what these, these zones are for, Carol, is to identify places where we would allow overnight parking.
Well, just, just like four or five hours in the evening, that's all.
There's, so, you know, what do we do? What do we do? Okay? We build more pads. Again, if your HOA is willing, there's, there's space up in, in Shoreline Phase One to put more offsite parking pads in than are, than, than those that are there. But it is, um, you know, it is from an engineering standpoint. Parking, uh, you know, if, if I were to park. You know, I've talked to the guys about parking along this portion of Shoreline after the houses. Because that, you know, at least it becomes, uh, passable on one side. Um, versus, you know, having the houses as sort of a barrier and parking on people's lawns. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things we're gonna have to consider. And, and I know it's not convenient, because nobody wants to park. People they're visiting.
Especially in the winter on, on hills, you know, when you have to walk up a steep hill.
No, we also don't wanna have parking on hills, period, because it's, it's guaranteed. Uh, opportunity to trash a car. But, because the plows, you know, if the plow loses it at all, they get way more momentum than anybody's parked car. And they're gonna, so, so there's no way we should be allowing on-street parking in this portion of the.
I, I think we should challenge ourselves to think of some solutions to some of these problems and try to bring, bring forward a kind of a proposal that. Is a good balance of public safety and resident convenience.
Attempt to do, Chris, and unfortunately, you know, from an engineer, pure engineering perspective and what the fire department and emergency services need. Anything other than the off-street parking is pretty much a, a detriment to their access. So how do we, how do we find a solution that makes sure that as a result of. Being considerate of our friends and neighbors, that somebody doesn't, um, end up in a hospital or worse, because we can't get a vehicle in there.
Yeah, we, and we might wanna get some, um, input from the HOAs. Because you could create more pads. And you could have, you could have some residents who wanna park their third and fourth car there permanently, and it just doesn't get moved. So that, that just works against what we're trying to accomplish. So we might wanna get some, some input from some of the folks that are managing the HOAs and get some. You know, get some advice from them, so to speak, is, is this doable? Um, even in, in a permit situation, um, you know, lots of towns have those, you know, permitted parking. You have to get your car permitted. I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying, you know, so, so what do we do in those cases? I think we need some more input.
Yeah, totally agree, Ralph.
Yep, I do too.
It was a good report, though. I thought the same thing. I thought there was a lot, there was some, some, some good input on this.
So we expect this on our January agenda?
But, I mean, I, I, for one, do not wanna be in office when we err on the side of courtesy to our. Uh, and ease of access to our, to our residents and, and somebody doesn't get. The emergency service they need in time. And, you know, I, I, I didn't. Build the town, I didn't approve the sizes. None of us did, but. Yeah, I think we gotta be really, we spent a lot of time trying to understand what the fire department and the emergency guys needed. And I think, you know, we put ourselves at risk. Ignoring it. So we've gotta find a, we gotta find a, a, a win-win and there are places. Where we could, we can stand it, but there are places where we absolutely can't. And, and, and the fact that you happen to have a home in that place that we absolutely can't is unfortunate, but. The risk is just too great.
Yeah, it's gonna be a tough pill regardless of, you know, there, there's gonna be, um, areas where it's just. Not possible, and, uh, it's gonna be a tough.
You know, it's unfortunate, and so that's why we're trying to think of, you know, other opportunities around off-street parking pads and things like that. I mean, Carol was. Kind enough to point out that, you know, even if there was a shuttle service, people at one kind of wanted to use it. You know, we say, park here, we'll drive you to the house. It's like, it's like the airport parking, right? You have offsite parking to save a few bucks. But, uh, a lot of folks say, the heck with it, it's not worth it. I'd rather be on-site, because I don't wanna have to wait for the little vein and. Drive two exits down the highway and buy my car, so, yeah. Okay, so that's all I wanted to share on that tonight. You know, there's been some work done, but, uh, we're not quite. We're not quite there yet. So we now get to the portion of the meeting where, um, we have, uh, a very. We have a need to have a very brief, 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 brief. Update on, uh, pending and imminent litigation. And so, um, make sure this, so you can see the agenda. I get over here and share that. And so I would need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting. And, um, move to executive session for a brief update on pending and imminent litigation.
I move that we move to executive session.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second it. I was, I was pausing for Chris to get another, uh.
Thanks, I was pausing, because I was sure Ralph was gonna jump in, but okay, thanks, Jerry.
I was pausing for you, Chris.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Ralph, Carol, uh, uh, Jerry, Carol, Ralph and, uh, Chris.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So thank you all, all from the public side, um, what I'm gonna do is, uh. Pretty much, um, kick everybody else off, I guess. Um, Alicia, can you make me host?
If you kick them off, they can't rejoin this meeting, so.
I'm not gonna kick us off, I'm gonna kick off people who. Alicia, can you, can you make me host, please, before you go away?
Uh, do you wanna just start a new meeting, so it's not recorded?
Yeah, I can do that, all right.
Yeah, we need to start a new meeting because of the recording factor.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, so let me stop, stop the meeting and, uh, we can.